Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Greenbelt City Council to order. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Good evening. Ms. McKenney, here. Ms. Poppy, here. Ms. Pope, here. Mr. Roberts, here. Ms. Weaver, here. Mayor Jordan.
I'm here. Please join us in a moment of silent reflection as we remember and think about Green Belters that have passed away since the last meeting. And I'd like to mention Maura Warner and Kathleen Stewart-Hurd. Please join us in a moment of reflection. Thank you. Mayor Protim, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
Flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Thank you. So, as always, we hold council meetings usually twice a month, except for August and also in November this year. We hold these meetings to set policy and take formal actions. Our meetings are always open to the public, except for executive sessions as authorized by state law, so that members of the public can watch your deliberations. We do strive to provide reasonable opportunities for the public to comment, and we'll pause periodically for public comment during these times. If you wish to make a comment, if you're here in the room, raise your hand. After being recognized, you can go over to the podium, and you need to state your name and where you live in Greenbelt, or where you live. You need that for the minutes. If you're on Zoom, you can submit a question using the Q&amp;A tab at the bottom of the screen, or you can raise your virtual hand, and after being recognized, we'll promote you so you can speak. And finally, if you are watching on cable TV, or watching on YouTube, or I guess Facebook Live. We stream on Facebook Live? Okay. You can submit a question by email, and the email address is questions@greenbeltmd.gov. So, the public comment is three minutes during the meeting, and we ask that you speak on one subject, because other people may want to speak. And we ask that you, you know, exercise some decorum in your comments. We're all neighbors here. And finally, it's petitions and requests is the first item on the agenda, so this is an opportunity for residents and others to make a statement, or to ask a question. We do not respond to the questions immediately. We allow staff time to formulate a response. So, and you have five minutes to actually make a petition. So, at this time, I'd like to ask, are there any petitions or requests? Mr. Hartman?
I'm Michael Hartman, to Court Gardenway. I'd like to actually comment on two items in the consent decree, and then I have a comment on the third item, sorry. First is, I want to thank Public Works for purchasing an EV for the community development vehicle replacement. I'm glad to see that's being done. Second of all, on the pavilion aspect, that was number 29. Number 26 for the pavilion. It says that the pavilion, the last item on the list for each of them is ADA compliant. And I wanted to remind you that ADA complaint is not a confined thing, a definite thing. The ADA guidelines are just how their guidelines, and they're flexible in that sense. And the creation of the pavilion has to be usable. It does happen where something is ADA compliant, but not usable by people with disabilities. And I think that's really important, that whoever's building them and understands that ADA is not just doing what the guidelines say. It has to be looked at in that respect. For example, are there places for a person in a wheelchair to sit at a table with preset benches, and things of that nature? And the last thing I want to say is that a comment I have on the fact that there is only one month, one designated celebratory month, that's not being observed by the city. Out of all the ones, there are Asian Pacific Islander, there's Black History Month, there's Women's History. The one that was not done, and I brought this up the last meeting, was Disability Employment Awareness Month. And I noticed that there is no proclamation for that tonight either. And so, I'm very disappointed that of all the months that we celebrate, I think that we need to remember that DEI includes people with disabilities as well. And very often, people with disabilities are not thought of in the DEI realm, but they definitely are included. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Other petitions or requests? Please.
Bill Orleans, Greenbelt resident. I'll forego asking for what I've been regularly asking for, for in some cases going back two years tonight, because something more pressing. I was here earlier today asking for a copy of the memorandum. This is with regard to Agenda Item 16. Asking for a copy of the memorandum from members of the JEDI Action Team alleging, whatever was alleged in that memorandum concerning Councilmember Roberts. I was not told, I was told that there might be, it might be necessary for some redactions to be made to that document, but that in response, I suggested that not only I would like to see it, I suspect that maybe other residents of the Greenbelt who were here tonight would like to see it, and that it would be made available on the table. It was not, so I inquired and was told that an MPIA request would be necessary to secure that document. I had been told earlier today that it was, that MPIA request was necessary for me to obtain a copy of the email from Mayor Protim Weaver to the city manager requesting its inclusion on tonight's agenda. I again delivered that request to the city manager. I'm hopeful that someone even now is producing copies of those two documents. But the one document, the memorandum, since it's on the agenda, and fairly substantial step for council today, tonight, if there's going to be a discussion of that item, it cannot be held fairly if those residents of the city who wish to know what's in that document have not had a chance to review that document. So, while I am hopeful that one copy will be delivered to me shortly, others should have the opportunity to review it before any such action would be taken by council. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else in the room with a petition or request? Because we do have one online. I see that Stephanie has her hand up. Stephanie, are you there?
Yes.
Good evening. Good evening. Could you state your name and where you live in Greenbelt, or in the area, more or less?
Stephanie O'Brien, Greenbelt. I agree totally with what Bill has just said. Okay. I mean, putting that on the agenda without people knowing, without people having any kind of background or documents is not right. So, I don't know how you're going to do this without putting it off and giving people a chance to view the documents.
Okay. Thank you, Stephanie. Any other petitions or requests? Hearing none. I think, I see Ethan Sweep from Congressman Ivy's offices in the room. Did you want to make a petition, or we actually have room for you in the agenda in a few minutes? Okay. Okay. Well, as I stated initially, oh, Mary Johnson, please.
Hi, I'm Mary Johnson at 51 Ridge Road. Will we have a chance to speak about Item 16 when it occurs? Or no, we should?
Yeah, I believe, actually, I'm going to move to actually pull it off of the consent agenda.
Okay. Not on the consent agenda?
We're actually going to move that. But yes. So, at this time, if there are no additional petitions or requests, let's move to the consent agenda. Are there modifications to the consent agenda? I believe there's some minutes on there.
Yes. I would like to remove the minutes from November 27th and December 11th. There are some corrections that need to be made to those two sets of minutes.
Okay. So, will you make a motion?
I would move to remove those two sets of minutes from the consent agenda for...
Do you want to make a motion to adopt the consent agenda without?
Do we need to vote on the amendment first?
I think we do, but we certainly can't.
We usually just move to. Move to.
Well, then I moved to adopt the consent agenda minus those two minutes. Although, Ms. Anderson?
I'm sorry. I have a suggestion to make.
Oh, yeah.
We have, we have an item that's on the consent agenda that we would like to remove to the regular agenda, and that's primarily because of the cost. You know, if council would like to maintain that in the consent agenda, we're happy to. And that's item number 26.
Number 26?
The approval of the Buddy Attic Park Outdoor Pavilion. It's currently on the consent agenda.
Right. And you want to move that to item number 16?
Because of the amount, it's 218,000. I think it would be good to have it as regular agenda. However, if council wants to entertain it as a consent agenda, there'll be no objection on my part.
I, I, so I'll make a motion to, well, actually, you've made a motion. It hasn't been seconded, though. But we need to change that.
Second, move the amendments.
Change it again.
I will, I can adjust my motion to move the consent agenda, removing the two sets of minutes, November 27th and December 11th, as well as taking number 26 off of the consent agenda to the regular agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second that one.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Okay, and that's going to bring us to the agenda itself. And Mr. Samron, you had several modifications. We were talking about just shifting things around. Can you please state those, or shall I?
Yes. The, we were looking to move the Marshals, the conversation with the Marshals, MOU. That's the item number 17. Move that up on the agenda to item number 14. We... Items, put it in.
Thank you.
Oh, it's on this one? Okay. So, it's reflected, the order's reflected in the updated, sorry, in the agenda I have here. So, we'll move number 16 to number 20, number 17 to number 14, number 21 to number 19. And item number 26 has been moved off the consent agenda onto number 16.
Okay. Yeah.
All the agendas remain the same. We're just reshuffling things. So, the first...
We're adding number 16 from the consent agenda, and we're adding it back to number 16.
No, 16 was never on the consent agenda. 26.
26 is now going to be 16.
And 16 is going to be, what, 20?
Leaving, okay. Can you go through the list again?
What's the new list?
Okay, so, what I've got here is number, with number 16, we're moving to number 20. With number 17, we're moving to 14. Number 21, we're moving up to 19. And number 26 goes up to 16.
We need to, okay.
Did I get that right?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Roberts?
Well, I want to move that number 16 be removed from the agenda, because I want time to consult with legal counsel, to go over all the documents, and also want the public, as some members of the public have stated, to have time to review those documents as well. And I think that that's not a big request, because I think I am entitled to have legal counsel when I'm being accused of something that I think I did not do. So, that's my motion to remove 16 until a future date. You can do it at the next meeting, or whatever you want to do, but I want time to consult with legal counsel. Thank you.
Is there a second?
I'll second that for him. And I'll, I'd like to say something, yeah. I'd like to say something to it. It's not that I don't think that there should be a consequence for the actions that, that, you know, for the behavior. What I didn't like is that normally, the entire council makes a decision, decides, or sits together and talks about the situation, and discusses what should, what should be our next step. This did not happen. It was a discussion between three or four people, and not the entire council. So, I'm not saying, I'm not opposed to consequences. I'm really not opposed to the consequence, because I think there should be a consequence, because this is not the first time. But I think the way it was done, that's where I have a problem with. I think we all should have been at the table. We all should have discussed it, and then decided, okay, let's move forward with this or that.
Okay, so, other council members have the right to speak before we cycle around, please?
Yes. Well, and I did request this put on the agenda, because this was an action asked of us by the Jedi Action Team, which was a memo that Mr. Roberts received several weeks ago, and has had access to that information. What is stated in the, in the agenda packet is basically restating what was in that memo that Mr. Roberts has had access to for several weeks, which we did actually have some discussions of in several meetings. And so, I don't believe that, I think we have had conversations about this, and I think it's, it's something that was very concerning to me, and clearly was very concerning to the staff that put forward the memo. And I would argue that Mr. Roberts has had much time to look at it. I also made sure that I requested via email that it be added to the agenda, I believe, on Monday or Tuesday last week. It was in the, it was in the news review, and then this document was in the agenda packet on Friday. So, there has been notice given to the public, as well as to Mr. Roberts, and he has seen the memo that this is based on, that I reiterated in a more condensed form in, for the agenda packet.
Well, so, hold on, hold on. Any other council members want to speak? I'm going to say this. Generally speaking, with the agenda, council members have pretty broad discretion about pulling something off. Generally, this comes into play when a council member is not available or not ready to speak about something. So, if we were to delay it, it would come up at the 18th, meaning on the 18th, which is a few weeks from now. So, I just want to say that, generally speaking, council members do have some discretion on pulling something, delaying an item on the agenda. This is in place. Any other council members want to speak? Ms. Nisel?
Given that the public has not seen, has not had the opportunity to see even a redacted version of the memo, I do believe that we should wait until that can be included in the agenda packet.
Any other comments from council? Mr. Roberts, please.
Well, one thing that concerns me is I hear this thing that, you know, someone just said that there's been other cases of me doing something, but none of it, there's no documentation. And the fact is, what, the, what information is out there, I did not receive until days after the council knew about it at an executive session. In fact, the city manager apologized for not getting it to me beforehand. And when it was last talked about, at that executive session, there was no indication that I was going to face charges.
Not charges, Mr. Roberts.
Well, it is. It is, because you're impugning my reputation, is what you're doing. So, all as I ask is common courtesy for myself and the public. That's all I'm asking.
Well, thank you. I don't want to belabor this. We're trying to approve the agenda. Let's go ahead and take a vote. All in favor of delaying this until the 18th of November, at the next council meeting, please say aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, so this will, will come up on the 18th. So, that's the one item. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the rest of the agenda as amended.
There's just one typo in both the memo. This is for Agenda number, item number 17, no, I'm sorry, 14. It's mentioned several times that it's the, near the intersection of Woodland Way and Hillside Road, and I believe that that's supposed to be Northway, in both the agenda and the memo.
Instead of Woodland?
Is it Woodland, or is it Northway? Do we know? It is Woodland, yeah. Because that's, yeah, Woodland makes sense, yeah. Okay. Since this is the agenda, I'm not going to take public comments on this. I'd like to just go ahead and vote. Did someone second my motion?
Second.
Okay, Ms. Pope has seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Well, let's dive right into the presentations, and we are so honored and privileged to have Ethan Sweep with us tonight. Ethan is the, is a liaison to Congressman Glenn Ivy, and he is a former Greenbelt, he lived in Berwyn Heights, then he moved to Greenbelt. Where are you now?
I'm back in Berwyn Heights.
Oh, man. That's okay. We're still going to let you speak tonight.
Thank you. We share 193, so, and we've done work on it, so, that's good.
So, you've got a quick update for us?
Yeah, just a few quick updates. It won't take much of your time, but thank you, as always, for having me here. It's always great to be so close nearby in Greenbelt. It makes the commute a million times easier. But I just wanted to let you all know, and give you all a brief update, you know, that we have spent the summer, and the last, the second half of the year, since I've last seen you diligently working for many of our constituents. As always, our office is here to help, so if you or your constituents have concerns, or are having issues with the federal agencies, please feel free to reach out to me, or go to our website and open up a case. We would be more than happy to help you. But tonight, I mostly wanted to talk about two main things that we're working on right now. So, the first is the Service Academy, or Military Service Academy nominations that are available through our office. So, some of you may know, but members of Congress, the senators, the vice president, as well as the president, are all allowed to nominate people to the military service academies, or five, four of the five of them. The four of them are the U.S. Military Academy in West Point, the Naval Academy just up the road in Annapolis, the Air Force Academy in Colorado Springs, and the Merchant Marines Academy up in New York. The Fifth Service Academy, the Coast Guard Academy, does not require a congressional nomination for appointment. So, Congressman Ivy may nominate up for 10 to 15 members from our district for each vacant academy nomination slot. And you can do that by going to our website, ivy.house.gov, under Services. It should say Military Service Academy nominations. There you'll find more information, as well as a form in order to apply. We do want people to know that getting a nomination from our office does not necessarily guarantee admission into the service academies, but it is a part of each service academy's process. So, you get it, so, in short, getting a nomination from us is required to get in, but getting a nomination does not, does not guarantee admission, if that makes sense. The deadline to apply for those is kind of coming up quick. It is October 31st, so towards the end of this week. I know we've been getting a lot of applications in lately, but this is also something we do every year. So, if you know somebody for next year, or the year after, that may be interested, from the conversations I've had with some of the people who've applied to our office, it does take, you know, a year or two to really get that application submitted, and to kind of work your way up there. So, that's the first thing. The second thing I want to talk to you about is the Community Project Funding Grant Program that our office is hoping to do again this next Congress, and this next appropriation cycle. So, for those who might not be aware, this is a grant program where members of Congress can submit projects to the House Appropriations Committee. It was started up again in the last couple of years, and it has been a very effective way for us to get funding to nonprofits and municipalities in our district in order to do projects that serve the public. Our office will begin accepting applications as soon as we receive guidance from the House Appropriations Committee, which usually happens in about February or March. And if you have ideas for projects, or would like to get more information, you can reach out to me and schedule a meeting. I'd be happy to meet with you, to talk about anything you guys are thinking of submitting this year. I know last year, we are still working on getting the money for the youth roof center replacement. We are hopeful that the budget will pass, that it will be in there, and that we can get you guys set up with that. But yeah, we'll also be having a webinar, probably sometime in January, to kind of go over the process. Hopefully, we'll know a little bit more information by then, as well. We'll be coming around again early next year, kind of as, in February or March, as the process is getting a lot closer, to hopefully give you some more information as well. So, with that, I, that's all I have for you tonight. Again, thank you for having me, and I'll just ask if any of you have any questions.
Well, thank you very much. So, the Community Grant Program that you mentioned, is that contingent upon the budget actually being passed, or is it, can it happen with continuing resolutions?
Yeah, so, since, so, it is contingent on the budget getting passed. So, since the Community Project Funding is done as a part of the appropriations process, and it is a new funding line, there's nothing to, to continue as part of a continuing resolution. So, it is, it is required, it is, yes, we would have to get the budget through Congress, signed by the president, and into law in order for the money to come through.
Well, let's hope the new Congress and the next president are able to move that ahead, pass that budget.
Yes. If we don't do it in the lame duck session, we'll be very hopeful that it'll get done, hopefully early next year.
Yeah, well, thank you so much for your service, Ethan. Even though you've moved to Berwyn Heights, we still know where you live.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a couple of proclamations, and the first one that I'm going to do is the America Recycles Month. And I'd be, Ms. Robles, are you here to extend? Mr. Kim, are you also here for this, or just? Okay, okay. Mr. Kim says he's just here to chill.
Well, he's here, he's here to request money, right?
Luisa, why don't you come up here? Just $1.2 million.
Hey, good evening. So, here's the proclamation. Whereas each year, the United States generates more than 292.4 million tons of municipal solid waste, which is 4.5 pounds per person, per day. And whereas although the nation has achieved an overall recycling rate of 32.1%, much more than, much more can be done, especially in waste reduction, composting, the reuse of products and materials, and the purchasing of recycled products and packaging it. Whereas, Greenbelt has achieved a recycling rate of 62% through its many dynamic and successful recycling programs, such as residential curb side collections, two recycling centers, electronic recycling, styrofoam recycling, paint recycling, tree lumber recycling, backyard composting, food scrap drop-off, and yard waste composting. And whereas to focus the nation's attention on the importance of building consumer demand for recycled products, and to educate all Americans about the environmental and economic benefits of recycling, businesses, industries, government agencies, nonprofits, and individuals are joining together to celebrate America Recycles Month in 2024, and to encourage all residents to renew their pledge to reuse and recycle more, and to buy more recycled projects, products. So, now, therefore, I am of the Jordan by the authority vested in me by the residents and the City Council of Greenbelt.
Council of Greenbelt do hereby proclaim November 2024 to be America Recycles Month in Greenbelt, and encourage all of our residents to increase their recycling efforts and purchase those recycled products. These are effective ways to make a difference in our environment, preserve our natural resources, and reduce our landfill needs. Ms. Robles, I'd like to present this to you.
Thank you.
Blessings to the public work staff as a whole, but you're here to receive it.
Right.
Hey, Ms. Robles, you were out in front of public works this weekend with electronic recycling. You want to say a couple of words about stuff that's coming up? You know, we've been doing recycling, electronic recyclings for years.
Yes.
So are you-
So yeah, electronics recycling has been going on since I started working for the city over 15 years ago. We do them quarterly. So for those who are interested, you know, sometimes people are confused as to when we have them. They're quarterly, every January, April, July, and October, on the fourth Saturday of the month. So that's the little formula, unless there's a snowstorm or a pandemic, you know. But other than that, we've been holding to that schedule very regularly. January and July, in addition to electronics and styrofoam, we also do paint recycling. But then the other ones quarterly is electronics and styrofoam recycling. Styrofoam is the block number six, expanded polystyrene. It has to be the number six expanded polystyrene. There's other things that look like styrofoam that's not styrofoam. So we need to make sure it's tiny little balls stuck together that you're bringing for recycling. I also wanted to bring attention to our recycling drop off centers. We have two, one in Body Addict Park and one by the Dog Park off of Hanover Parkway. At Body Addict Park, you can bring all of your commingled recycling. So for residents that live in apartment buildings that don't have recycling, they can bring their commingled recycling there. We also have food scraps drop offs, the same thing. They can bring their food scraps there. Oyster shell collection, gently used clothing and like bags and shoes and stuff like that collection, oil, antifreeze, and oil filters, and this is for motor oil. Now remember, this is just for our residents, not intended for businesses. Even if you're a business owner and living Greenbelt, you can't bring your business stuff to a recycling center. It's meant to be just for residential use. So we have all of those things in the recycling centers. And then I am always available for people if they have any recycling questions. Sometimes people are like, oh, we don't want to bother you, but it's no bother. That's part of my job. I love answering recycling questions. So bring them on. You can call, you can email. I am also available to do the recycling tables show and tell presentation. I've done it for the Golden Age Club, for Greenbridge House, for Greenbelt Elementary. So if you ever are confused as to what to recycle, you have a group of people that you know are interested, let me know. I'll come and give a presentation for you. And these are, these are all the ways in which Greenbelt celebrates America Recycles Month. November 15th is America Recycles Day. So everyone get to recycling.
That's fantastic. Hey, I have a question. So over the years, and given the electronic recycling on Saturday, are we seeing a difference in what's coming in? I know a few years back, everybody was trying to recycle their giant 56-inch screen TV sets, and now you don't really see those anymore. So is everything getting smaller?
Yes. We're certainly noticing a big change in the stuff being brought. As you said, we used to get the tube TVs and the big TVs and the big computers, the CPUs and stuff like that. And now laptops, tablets, you know, much smaller things. So we used to do like 18 to 25 pallets with Gaylord boxes full of things to recycle. Now it's three or four. So that's how much the electronics have changed and have gotten so much smaller.
That's interesting. And the second question before we go to Mayor Portem, you've been living in Greenbelt for a while. Do people ever drop off recycling at your house?
They do.
They do. What do you think about that?
So if you miss like the styrofoam or electronics and it's like a cable or something like that, people know where I live, and yeah, sometimes they do drop it off in front of my house. I don't mind if it's things that I can carry, you know?
No, I don't think people should do that.
No, I prefer them coming to the event, but if it's something easy, then I can do it.
Okay. Mayor Portem?
Yeah, well, I just pointed out that Dr. Robles, there's a really nice video of, from Labor Day, because you've had that, that big table of all of the different things that you can and can't recycle that are out on that table and kind of going through each one, which it is unfortunately more complicated than we might like it to be. But can you also give us maybe a quick update about the composting program? Because that's after all, that is after all, a really, that is recycling food scraps back into, you know, the black gold for gardening.
That's right. I knew I was forgetting something. So we do have a special program, thanks to USDA, Trinity Church, Greenbelt, where we are collecting food scraps curbside. And then those food scraps are being taken to Trinity Church. We are doing us composting in small scale, and the compost just came back to Greenbelt. So now it's been a full, full cycle, closing the loop. And this compost was really, really high quality. All of the garden people were very happy about it. The program will continue. In January, we will have another opening. So we've had two phases of openings. Right now, we have 320 people. In January, we'll ask like maybe 60 more people to participate, and then the program will end sometime next summer. And we'll have to talk to council and city manager to see what we want to do and how do we want to continue with this program.
Very good, very good. So the compost that's coming back, is there some of it, is some of it at Trinity Church? Can people go and pick it up, or is it being delivered to the garden sites?
It was delivered to the garden sites. We had three deliveries, one for Henry's Hollow, which were 18 cubic yards, a delivery at Hamilton Gardens, and that was a little bit over 10 cubic yards, and a delivery at the Gardenway Gardens.
I saw the signs for that.
Also a little bit over 10 cubic yards. And the people that participated or that are participating in the food scraps pickup were welcome to come and pick up compost from the piles. There's a little bit left on the pile at Hamilton Cemetery, and maybe a little bit left at Gardenway. The one in Henry's Hollow is completely gone. Yeah. But we're very happy we'll have more deliveries. So there might be other deliveries in the next following months or in the spring, depending on how, you know, things are cooking. And yes, we were really, really happy with the quality, and it's so exciting to be able to close the loop. And all these food scraps that we're producing, now we're putting back into our gardens.
It's fantastic. Thank you for your good work.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, I have a proclamation, Military Family Appreciation Month. And I don't see anybody from the Legion here, from the Auxiliary or the Sons of the American Legion, but I'll go ahead and read it anyhow. Ms. Pope, are you a member of the Auxiliary? You are. Why don't you stand up then?
Oh, don't worry about it. I'll get out of your way.
Okay, whereas Military Family Appreciation Month was established in 1996 by the U.S. government, along with the Armed Services YMCA. And whereas the Military Family Appreciation Month provides an opportunity to appreciate the continuous sacrifices and contributions of our military families. And whereas military families are the backbone of the services, providing unconditional love and support to members who often work in complex and dangerous environments. And whereas Military Family Appreciation Month recognizes the challenges family members face in support of their loved ones in uniform during extended training and deployments. The families know the risk that their loved ones are undertaking but accept this life of service. Now, therefore I am at the Jordan by the authority vested in me by the residents and the City Council of Greenbelt do hereby proclaim November as Military Family Appreciation Month, and encourage all of our residents to remember the dedication and strength of military families separated during this holiday season. I'd like to present this to you.
I certainly want to, I appreciate the acknowledgement and thank you for the proclamation, and I'm going to make sure that I deliver this to, to the American Legion Auxiliary and the American Legion and so. But thank you very much. I think it's very important to acknowledge our military families. My husband served over 20 years in the military, and so did my entire family and most of my friends. So I think it's very important to acknowledge and realize what sacrifices the families make, not just the soldier itself, but also the families, and that's very important. So thank you very much, and I'll be more than happy to pass that along. Thank you.
Okay, and just want to point out that during the month of November, Veterans Day is coming up on the 11th of November, and the Greenbelt American Legion Post 136 will be sponsoring or coordinating the Veterans Day program at 11 o'clock at our Greenbelt War Memorial, right there on Centerway. So make sure everybody knows about that.
Which unfortunately is not a holiday for me, so I will be at work.
And just one more thing I wanted to mention. Emancipation Day is coming up, November the 3rd, at the Greenbelt Cinema. There's a film screening that actually, well, it actually features one of our Greenbelt residents, Iona Godfrey King, and her son, Donnell. And they're, they'll actually be there to talk about this documentary, talking about a Klan bombing of their home with three other family members, February 16th, 1964 in Jacksonville, Florida. So the Black History, Culture and History Committee is coordinating the program on the 3rd, and there is another program on the 9th, I believe, at the Greenbelt Library. So at this time, let us move into the meat of the agenda. And before we get there, I believe, Mr. Samron, you have an update for us?
Do. Are we doing the minutes first?
Are we just moving? I think we are just taking them off. They can be on the next. My intention was to just take them off and put them on the next meeting.
Right.
If I didn't make that clear, that was my intention.
We know, we know.
All right. Sorry. Well, let's get to the meat of it then. I think that's my report. Busy week. I'll start off that we had the two dinners the weekend prior, and that was the First Responders Dinner, where we honor brave men and women in our forces and our public works, police department, our fire, our fire companies too, in particular, the Greenbelt Fire Station in the Berwyn Heights. So we posted those names of those awardees and congratulate them and feel privileged and honored to have them amongst us. We had a very successful advisory board dinner. The room was full to capacity. I think we only had 10, 10, 10 seats available out of 100 that we had reserved. So really great turnout, great conversation, and good collaboration with the, with our volunteers. So thank you, council, for splitting up amongst the different tables and engaging in those conversations, because we got great feedback from those engagements. The events we had over this weekend, Walrumpus was great success, the kayaking event, there were two groups of kayakers. I understand that a council member is among the fastest kayakers in the groups.
I think two, actually.
Okay. So we, the team is, was so, evaluating the program so successfully, they're going to plan future events around that. So probably one, one in the spring. The website, I know you, you all want to see a new website. We started the process of soliciting requests for proposals. We have received 75 proposals for our website. So we thought it would be, we'll have a few proposals to review, and we had hoped and had planned to bring a recommendation to council to this meeting. But with 75 proposals, we need to review them, and we'll put this on the November 18th agenda.
Fine. Now, before we go to NLC, just to know, maybe the front runners are-
There wouldn't be a decision from council until after your return, so keep an eye out for all the vendors at NLC. Yes, yes.
Nice to know who's in the game.
Right. Many of those vendors, I was at the ICMA conference in Pittsburgh, and most of the website vendors were there, and all that were there submitted proposals, most submitted proposals. So on the playgrounds, we have removed the fencing at the Body Addict Playground. Both playgrounds, that's the Body Addict Playground, and the Spring Hill Lake Recreation Center have opened. So those are, playgrounds are open to the kids. They can start enjoying them. In line with those openings, we are scheduling the ribbon cutting activities for both playgrounds on Saturday. We will start at 1:00 p.m. at Body Addict this Saturday. And the second one at Spring Hill Lake Recreation will start at 2:00 p.m. So that's going to go from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m., and we'll have some treats, and that's a more, more extended event.
Ah, sounds great.
So one of the things, we had a great NASA tree planting celebration last Monday. Good turnout. Thank you, council members that were able to join. We have kicked off project meetings with the Armory, the feasibility study. So given council's approval of that project, we've moved forward in scheduling the kickoff meeting and setting the schedule for all of those community engagements. So we'll, we're putting some final touches on the schedule and get that to you as soon as possible. Road resurfacing work continues. The last week, we had some milling work get started. This week, the team is going to continue on to Centerway and other parts of the city. There are road signs set up in the Roosevelt Center, and our employees have provided notice to the, to the local businesses. So that work continues. We are, the audit work is happening on site again this week. This is work we started a couple weeks ago. So we're under the audit season, and that just work continues as we prepare for next year's budget season, which for us kicks off in November, as we inform our department heads, provide direction to our department heads on how to plan for next year's budget. The Armory site, you'll have two agenda items before you to vote on. This formalizes the acquisition and setting a budget for the Armory site. The site has been secure. We have the temporary camera trailer out there, and we have closed all the points of egress on the site. And I have one more thing, sad news. I think it's general knowledge now, the court dismissed our legal case against the county fire department. And we have options that we'll discuss with council. And I'll take questions you may have on the reports.
Thank you. Really, really upset about the court's decision, and we'll be talking about our next steps. So with the Centerway paving, there's a big sign out there. So it says that's going to start tomorrow. Is that really going to happen?
Yes, weather permitting, and we have great weather expected, not just tomorrow, but Wednesday and Thursday. It's supposed to be warm for Halloween.
Okay, so that's going to go for two, three days?
It's going to go, we give ourselves the remainder of the week, but we expect it to be done. We should be out of there by Thursday for Halloween. And then the team moves on to the police department site for road work.
Fantastic. You know, the other passageway through Greenbelt that's getting a lot of work is that bridge over at NASA Goddard. And they keep, it seems like they keep changing things around. So the sign that's out there now says that they'll be closing the parkway overnight on the 31st. That's what it says. So-
We get the notices and we put them, put them through our social media and our emails. So we redistribute the messages as we get them.
It's at the 28th and 29th.
No, it was the 23rd, 24th, and then they had added later the 31st, at least in the, in the notices that I saw, that I, you know, whenever I get those through my Goddard newsletter, I pass those along as well. I think, I think the city has other sources of information, but that's corroboration.
Okay, okay. Councilmember Pompey?
I noticed in your report, you mentioned that you had an ARPA update with the ARPA Outreach Project, and I was just wondering if you had any updates on that that you could give us, how that was going?
Yes, we did a debriefing with the team. They knocked on 4,000 doors. So a lot of, a lot of engagement. We reviewed, no one's here from that team, but we got updates on the, on the number of doors knocked, the number of engagement, how much engagement, what were the things that folks were asking for. Now, the, the outcomes of that project were to distribute all the ARPA funding. So all the scholarship money was, we had enough applicants for that, so we, we get away with all these scholarship funds. The remainder funds for the childcare vouchers and other programs, given the up- vouchers and other programs, given the updated ruling from the Treasury on being able to encumber those funds, we'll be able to encumber any of those remaining funds, and they're really small amounts for those designated programs. So, the childcare vouchers, we're not going to bring that money back and reallocate it. There are families that will still benefit from it, and now that the rule allows us to spend that money over the next two years, as long as it's encumbered by December thirtieth, those funds will stay with those programs. They'll just need to be used for those services. And that is what allows us, as a reminder, allows us to encumber the food subsidy programs, encumber them now and allows us to spend them over the next two years. So, same, same ruling. Um, we talked a bit about the linkages between the outreach program, the Workforce Development Program and the Entrepreneurship Center, that there are folks that are, made their way from that community outreach engagement through to the other program. So, not only was it just about ARPA, but also what other programs, um, are, are available. And I'm gonna have to show you one of these days my new business car. And my new business car is a three-D printed, uh, widget that the space printed for me and has a, a NFC chip on it. And so, it was great to see one of these art concepts become, have a business utility. So, also learned about that and other things that they're making.
Sounds like it was hugely successful, so that's really impressive. Four thousand doors is, that's a lot of doors, so.
Yes, and we're, we're working on scheduling a ribbon cutting open house event with the space, so we'll let Council know.
Very good, very good. Let's, uh, let's, I have a question from, I, Robert, uh, Mr. Goldberg Strassler, would you like to speak? I, I have a feeling that the other gentleman with his hand up wants to comment on a previous agenda item, and I'm not willing to accept that comment on the approval of the agenda.
Robert Goldberg Strassler, one fourteen last nerve lane, just a question on the engagement project. Were, were emails captured?
Yes, there were some, some, uh, information and it was subject to what folks were comfortable giving, but some information were, were captured. There was also, uh, notes captured on what doors were knocked, um, and other engagement data points.
Oh, is this one, on, on those emails that are captured, are they gonna be shared with the PIO, so further engagement and communication be, can be provided to them?
That is the goal, to get them enrolled into our, uh, distribution channels.
Okay, very good. Uh, is there a question about the administrative report?
No, sir, my question concerns not the agenda, but a comment made by Councilmember Weaver, and I would like a clarification.
Sir, you're out of order. Please have a seat.
While I'm standing here now, maybe Councilmember Weaver would like to clarify her comment about...
Mr. Williams, have a, you can come and talk to me later, this is not, this is out of order right now. If you have a question for me, I will, you can come and find me at some later point.
I will sit and I will keep my hand raised until I'm recognized to ask this question.
Okay, thank you. So, let's move on to item number eleven. And this is an ordinance of the City Council of Green Belt authorizing the deed acquisition and ownership for seventy-one hundred Green Belt Road, the Armory. And this is an item for first reading, but it is also for suspension of the rules and for second reading and adoption. On October the eleventh, twenty-twenty-four, the City of Green Belt completed the acquisition of seventy-one hundred Green Belt Road by obtaining the deed for the property. To formalize this transaction, a proposed ordinance will authorize the city's ownership and acquisition of the site, ensuring legal recognition, enabling the city to proceed with any future plans for the property. So, because this is a motion, a first reading, a suspension of the rules, and second, then a second reading for adoption, uh, it's gonna take six affirmative votes to, uh, suspend the rules. Uh, would someone like to make a motion to that effect, please? This, uh, oh, go ahead. It's for first reading and suspension of the rules.
I would like to introduce an ordinance for first reading and suspension of the rules. Um, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Green Belt authorizing by deed the acquisition and ownership of seven thousand one hundred Green Belt Road, Green Belt, Maryland.
Seconded, uh, so, that was, uh, first reading and suspension of the rules. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Yeah, Ms. McKenney?
Yes.
Ms. Pompey?
Yes.
Ms. Pope?
Yes.
Ms. Neesel?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay, and would you like to make a motion for the second reading?
I'd like, I'd like to introduce for second reading and adoption an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Green Belt authorizing by deed the acquisition of and ownership of seventy-one hundred Green Belt Road, Green Belt, Maryland.
Is there a second?
Second, I want to.
Okay, thank you. Is there any discussion?
I'm very excited to finally have this on the agenda.
Congratulations, it's over, we've got it.
Okay, okay, well, no, we have to vote on it first, yeah. So, uh, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. McKenney?
Yes.
Ms. Pompey?
Yes.
Ms. Pope?
Yes.
Ms. Neesel?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
The motion carries.
That motion carries. I, I've got some sparkling water here, I'd like to propose a toast. You all have, uh, have your water bottles and, uh, Mr. Roberts, would you like a little sparkling water here?
Got the little cups out.
You are serious, okay.
So, cheers and congratulations on the Armory. A sweet taste of retreat.
It's great.
Okay, so now that we've acquired it, we have to allocate some funding to, uh, to actually take care of it. So, item number twelve is an ordinance of the Council of the City of Green Belt, Maryland, take a supplemental appropriation in the general fund in the amount of fifty thousand dollars, uh, for the acquisition and ongoing maintenance of certain real property known as seventy-one hundred Green Belt Road. That's tax ID number twenty-one dash two-three-six-three-six-three-eight. And this also would require first reading, suspension of the rules, and second reading and adoption, if that is so willed. This appropriation of fifty thousand and one dollars, let me say that correctly, is needed from the general fund, uh, from the Armory Account one sixty. These funds will address the acquisition and maintenance costs associated with seventy-one hundred Green Belt Road. Uh, City Manager Samron, uh, well, actually, we need to, uh, to vote to first reading and suspension of the rules. Do you, anybody want to make that motion? Yes, Councilmember, please.
Um, uh, uh, introduction of an ordinance of the Council of the City of Green Belt, Maryland, to make a supplemental appropriation in the general fund in the amount of fifty thousand and one dollars for the acquisition, uh, and ongoing maintenance of a certain real property known as, um, seventy-one hundred Green Belt Road, Green Belt, Maryland, and that's for first reading and suspension of rules.
Second.
The spoke is seconded. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. McKenney?
Yes.
Ms. Pompey?
Yes.
Ms. Pope?
Yes.
Ms. Neesel?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you, thank you. And would you like to introduce it for second reading and adoption?
Yes, um, intro- I'm introducing an ordinance of the city, of the city coun- of the Council of the City of Green Belt, Maryland, to make a supplemental appropriation in the general fund in the amount of fifty thousand and one dollars for the acquisition and ongoing maintenance of certain real property known as seventy-one hundred Green Belt Road, Green Belt, Maryland.
Is there a second? Okay, is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, will you call?
What, you, did you wanna?
You had a question for the, the City Manager.
Oh, yeah, would you like to, uh, allow, why do we need to do this?
Absolutely, do we, um, well, any, any activity that we have an expenditure for, we need to have a fund, uh, for that activity. So, this council is authorizing us to create Armory Fund one sixty, so that we can track expenses, uh, for the property. Why the fifty thousand and one dollars? Fifty thousand is for what we anticipate are maintenance expenses, utilities, primarily utilities, and any expense, related expenses for the security of the, of the site. The one dollar is specifically for the acquisition of the property.
Right, so, well, I got a dollar right here, why can't we use that dollar? No?
It's good to, to record that activity on, on our ledger, that we're spending a dollar for it.
I just wondered, for what length of time do you expect this money to last, or is this just to get a fund in place on the ledger sheet so that you can dip out of it?
So, this does two things. It, it creates the fund, so moving forward, there's going to be the Armory one sixty fund. So, in next year's budget, you'll see that, that fund there. What you're appropriating tonight is for the current fiscal year.
Okay, thank you.
Now, I, I don't anticipate us exceeding the fifty thousand. Now, there're gonna be expenses that are more than a fifty thousand, but they're coming out of the ARPA funding, so, such as the, the feasibility study. That's an expense towards the Armory, but it's coming out of the ARPA funds.
Your opinion that this fifty thousand dollars will last us through June thirtieth?
Correct.
Okay.
Just out of curiosity, when are the feasibility study, folks, when, when is that going to start?
The, we, we started it, uh, just this week with, uh, kickoff meeting. We outline the various tasks that need to be done and when. We expect to have the community engagement activities, uh, just after the holidays. There was, on the schedule, we could review the, uh, to have the community engagement in the holidays, but we think it's gonna be problematic with the availability of folks, so we decided to wait until January after the holiday season, so that we can have the, um, the community engagement sessions.
Makes sense to me.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well, let's go ahead and, uh, take the vote. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Kenny?
Yes.
Ms. Pompey?
Yes.
Ms. Pope?
Yes.
Ms. Neesel?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, so that's going to bring us up to the next item on the agenda, which I believe, what, number fourteen is, what is that now? Is that the, uh, thirteen? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, item number thirteen is a discussion of the removal of armrests on city benches. Councilmember Pompey requested this item be included on the agenda. Uh, the city currently has four benches clustered around the municipal building with armrests as dividers. Councilmember Pompey?
Um, yeah, I just have that on here. I think that we should remove the armrests. I, you know, I think they're, they're, there is a deterrent to keep unhoused people from lying on them or sleeping on them, and I just don't really feel like that's necessary to target that population in that way. We've got a lot of benches in the city without, without those dividers on them. I think they're really easy to remove and I think we should take them off. I don't know if we have to, if there was a, I don't know how they were originally put on there, like if it was by a motion from Council, or if, you know what I mean? I, I'm not sure, so I'm not sure how we would remove them. If we have to have a motion to remove them, do we just have to request? Because that's something that Public Works did on their own, you know what I mean? So, I'm not really sure. It's long before my time, so.
Yeah. Public Works, uh, did do it, and I think it may have been, uh, under the direction of a previous city, city manager. Council did not, uh, make the motion to do that. Um, I, I think, I think the city learned some things from past experience, um, with this issue. Uh, there was an unhoused, unhoused individual who, uh, was on one of the benches for more than a year. It's a very difficult, uh, situation. I don't think the individual could have stayed as long without really support and enabling from some members of the community. But there were issues and Green Belt Cares reached out to this individual and tried to provide, uh, resources from the county, neighboring jurisdictions from nonprofits, and it just didn't work out. And ultimately, the situation, uh, ended badly.
It turned violent.
So, uh, that decision with the armrest wasn't Council's decision. Council was, was divided and... So, but, one of the things that, that came out of that, the location is right there, it's next to the municipal building, but I think what was more of a factor was it's right in front of the community center and front, in front of the library. And those are areas where, uh, so many of our, our young people in the summer, summer camp kids are there. So, it's, it was a difficult thing to, to live through, because it did turn out badly. And it's four, four of the benches in the center, all, there aren't armrests in any other locations, so I just wanted to provide that context. Other council members want to make comments? Yeah, I think Mr. Roberts had his hand up first.
Well, I know that, uh, there was some discussion in this and I, I can remember, I know that, uh, my position at the time was that if you're gonna put it on one bench, you need to put it on every bench in the city, that we should not target, you know, an individual or just, you know, one bench or whatever it is. You know, if, if we're gonna do that, it should have been evenly across the city. If we want to prevent people from sleeping on the benches, then we need to prevent everyone. You know, we need to be fair about it and just having, targeting, you know, one bench or something, I don't think really was solving any issue, you know, because you can just go to another bench, you know, somewhere else in the city. So, uh, yeah, I, I think it was a, a bad decision just to put it on, I think it was on one bench originally, but, but there's four now, so I don't know what, what they put on originally, but I thought it was one bench, but, uh, I don't have a problem with, uh, voting to take them off.
Hey, Ms. Neesel had her hand up first.
Yeah, I see this, the armrests on the benches as reactive aggressive architecture that was put up targeting one individual, and that individual ended up being jailed. Um, I really don't agree with the result of us having put those, that aggressive architecture there, and I would like them removed as well.
The spoke?
At, at a time, um, at that time, I think, um, I know the Cares Department and the city tried every avenue they had to help that particular individual. Uh, the reason why that individual was jailed, because she attacked somebody and hurt somebody. So, um, but then finally received, I think, the help that, that she really needed, right? But she wouldn't accept them before, so there was a long issue. And so, the count, the city was divided because some residents, you know, went to help her and got blankets and, of course, you want to do that, I understand that, and the other, um, part of the residents, you know, they were dismayed. They said, "Look, we have young children, she's running out of children," so it was a big issue. They wanted us, they asked Council, "You need to do something, what are we gonna do?" And so, it, it stretched out to an entire year. It's pretty long. So, you know, and then that, that was the idea that, that, I don't know, someone came up, right? And, and that's why we did that. Not because we want to have aggressive architecture in, in the city, but we had to do, there, there came a point where something needed to be done. So, that was to be done. I don't really care. If, we can take it down, it doesn't matter. I mean, I'm, I'm okay if we've taken it down. I just wanted to give you a little bit more, more background, you know, what, what transpired. And then it was ugly, it was not nice, it was, it was a very difficult decision. I mean, it was really hard for us as well, for everybody.
Yeah, I mean, it, I, thank you for the context, because I think most of us probably didn't have all the context, we're not, um, aware of, of all the back and forth. Um, I, I guess my question is, be, it seems like this was in reaction to a certain individual. So, if the armrests are not, um, uh, if, if they're not solving something long-term, I don't know why we would have them in the first place. Um, but I do wonder, I'm not sure about how long ago this happened, but it would be helpful to know from members of the public. I know that we have received some emails about it, but I'm wondering if we have a good array of, of feedback from the community, um, since that has happened, whether or not there is more of a feeling from, from the community, whether or not they would help to take those down or not. I'm not, I'm sure if City Manager has heard anything.
Um, I have had, I've received limited feedback, and one that sticks out was particularly surprising, because there's some seniors that appreciate having the armrests to be able to get up and down into the seats. So, I wasn't expecting for that, for that feedback, but there was that positive feedback. Um, our, our service delivery model is not gonna change, whether there's an armrest there or not. Our team is really good at checking with the unhoused and providing resources, ma- making the offer of directing them to the shelter and other resources, so that will continue. We do that now and that's gonna, that's gonna continue. I think if, should we have somebody come at that site? And it happens now and, and... And it happens now and around many of our recreational facilities. Our team goes out and offers help, offers assistance. It's up to the individuals to accept it. And that we can push onto folks.
And that was a problem back, I don't know how many, five, six years ago. That was the issue because even there was a caseworker actually came out from the county. I mean, every week, I mean, that happened consistently. So, I mean, we, you know, every avenue there is and unsuccessfully, unfortunately, until the incident.
Yeah, Madam Clerk, do you?
Yeah, and I think we, we got at least one or two emails asking them for, to be removed. So it sounds like we just haven't necessarily had a lot of information. It is interesting that there are some people who actually like them, but it does seem like a fairly important symbolic thing that these are a, literally a barrier for lying on the bench. And I think removing them is a, is a better symbol, especially because, as Mr. Roberts points out, most of the benches around the city do not have these barriers. Most of them are just, you know, armrests at the end, if not at all. So I would be in support of removing them.
You know, I think we're missing, missing the point. The, you know, the bigger issue is unhoused individuals and homelessness. And you can see it in the district in DC. I've noticed that the encampments are coming back. I don't know if it's because ARPA money is running out. But, you know, I think the bigger issue is just being able to provide people that have health, maybe mental health issues, you know, making sure that they are able to get the services that they need. Part of that kind of lies on the county because it's almost beyond, it is beyond our capacity. We are not in a position as a city to open up a shelter. So I would push back on the symbolic part a bit, simply because, you know, it's, it's a bigger issue. It's not really about, shouldn't be about the symbolism. I think there are a lot of kids that come through to get to the community center and the library. So there are, if someone really needs a place to lie down and sleep, any of the other benches or tents, or hopefully being able to access some of the shelters in the county in the surrounding area with nonprofits would be a better option than, you know, saying, well, hey, this, we want you to sleep here in front of the community center, in front of the library. So I'm just bringing that up. Jenny, please.
I would say by not having a barrier there, that's not necessarily an invitation to sleep there, first of all. And second of all, I think the idea that homeless people should not be seen by children, that just seems a little odd to me. They're part of our community. I don't feel like we need to hide them. And I also don't think that they're all inherently mentally ill or dangerous to children. I don't feel that way about homeless people and having my children walk by them. And I think that's, you know, that's a really bad stereotype to have. Many homeless people, most people who are unhoused get out of being unhoused, like they're able to sort of overcome their poverty. So I think the idea that, you know, we, there are certain places in the city where we don't want to see them. I think that's just, I mean, I think that, that just really bothers me. I think they are part of our community, and whether some people don't want to look at them or not, that's not the point. The point is that they live here. It's not illegal to sleep on those benches. And to me, one of the biggest issues was exactly was where the, where the benches are. Like, it's very clear they're in Center City where a lot of people are and travel. And it's like we're trying to hide them. It's like, go sleep behind the library if you're going to sleep outside, you know? And I think that's not a solution either. Those armrests on the bench are not a solution to homelessness. And now we're fortunate enough that we have, you know, our crisis intervention team who actually is trained to deal with people who have mental health issues, should one of those unhoused people in our city have mental health issues. So I just think, you know, acknowledging that they're part of our city and not erecting barriers to their, you know, participation or comfort is kind of the least that we can do.
I just, I'd just like to make one comment. It was not that the children shouldn't see if someone is homeless. This particular incident, this lady chased the little kids and said some very unkind things to those children. And, and at times, it was a little dangerous. And that's when the parents came and said, look, you guys need to do something because it was right by the library. It was right at the community center. It was right in the area where you have a lot of activities. So you have summer camps that utilizing the space. So it wasn't like somebody said, well, you know, we don't want you to see homeless. No, I think it's a good lesson. Children should see that because not everyone is fortunate enough to have a roof over their head. I'm very much aware of that. So I just wanted to clarify that. That was not the case.
Well, I was just to say, I was speaking more broadly. I wasn't speaking about the one person that these armrests were meant to deter. I mean, I was speaking broadly about homeless people in general, or unhoused people in general. Excuse me.
Why don't you go ahead?
So we have one from Catholic Legender. It says, please keep in mind these armrests may actually help individuals with difficulty getting off the benches. That was, I think, related. And then Mr. Bob Rudd would like to speak.
Mr. Rudd, are you there?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are any number of handicapped individuals in Greenbelt, in Old Greenbelt particularly, as it is probably the more senior age-wise of the community for whom those armrests actually do provide a means to easily stand up. Second, it is not the responsibility of the city council to set policy on homelessness. You're there, frankly, again, make sure the city's safe, the buses run, the flowers grow, the snow's picked up, the trash is taken care of. It's not your position or your responsibility to make social, political judgments. You weren't elected for that. Let's have a debate on that next election, solely debate it to that first. Third, people were threatened by people the last time there was not armrest on those benches. It wasn't just little kids. There were adults that were threatened. We had a person bitten by one of those people. It's got nothing to do with castigating the political correctness of the homeless, the unhoused, however you want to try and fancy it up and do that. Homelessness is homelessness. It's not the job of the city council to put more people at risk in the city by doing that in the most popular, most utilized center of town. You're going to endanger people. You're going to endanger more police officers. You're going to endanger more kids. You're going to endanger more adults, and you're going to hurt the people who need armrests to helpfully get up when they're trying to exercise, trying to walk, trying to navigate if they don't have a car around Old Greenbelt. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So anybody in the room want to?
Can I just, please? I would respectfully like to pull us back to the main issue, and that is the armrests on benches. As Mr. Rudd just said, we are not here to set policy on homelessness. We are here discussing whether or not an armrest should be on a bench.
All right, thank you. Anybody else, are there other comments?
Not online.
Do you have a personal?
Yeah, I just have a, I think I, oh, an email, okay. But just a quick question because I actually, I'm not sure that I've looked at these benches specifically. Are there armrests on the sides of these benches? So that could be, so the sides of the benches. So if somebody needed help getting up and down from the benches, you could use the armrests on the side of benches where you normally find armrests. And that would be a way to get up and down and have a support to get up and down from the bench. So the ones in the center are not necessarily needed for that. Well, but I assume that if you're, if you're somebody who knows you're going to need an armrest to get up off the bench, you probably are going to sit on one side where there's an armrest, right?
Okay, anybody in the room? Do you have a comment specifically about this issue? You're welcome to make it. Okay, thank you. So did anyone make a motion? Would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I remove, I move that we remove the center armrests from the four benches in city center.
Is there a second?
Second, ma'am.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nein.
No.
The ayes have it. Let's move on to item number 14. And that would be, what is item number 14? We moved all this stuff.
Well, memorandum of understanding.
Oh, yes, yes. This is, this is about an MOU, a memorandum of understanding. The Green Belt Police Department proposes entering into a memorandum of understanding with the United States Marshal Service Capital Area Region Fugitive Task Force, the CARF, FTF. This was established in 2004. The task force mission is to reduce violence in the region by identifying, investigating, and apprehending fugitives and those wanted for serious crimes against the community. The task force comprises over 300 law enforcement officers from different agencies. The department has previously sought the task force assistance, and they have been instrumental in apprehending suspects in many of Green Belt's high-profile cases. These cases include homicide investigations and the apprehension of defendants in the Shrum Hills Park shooting. This partnership would allow the department to assign officers to the task force to prioritize cases relevant to Green Belt. Participation in this task force would benefit the city of Green Belt by expanding the resources available to target violent criminal offenders in and around our community. Now, I had understood that there would be someone from the US Marshals here, and unless they're invisible, which undercover, posing as a chair, I don't think they're here, but Chief?
Unfortunately, they were unable to join us tonight. They, they got called away on Marshall's business, so they were unable to join us. Apologize for that. The assistant commander of that unit is also named Brian Kim, so not to be confused with our current Brian Kim. But if we'd like, we could have, never mind.
I was going to say, that'd be a really good disguise.
They're all Brian Kim, right? It works the same. No, unfortunately, they're not able to be with us here tonight. So this is a proposal that we're bringing forward to council to enter into an agreement with the United States Marshal Service to become part of this task force. That would allow us to assign our team, our officers from our special assignment team to the task force to investigate Green Belt-centric cases. What that impact is for us when we have violent cases, violent fugitive cases, we usually have to ask them to do it and get in line when they have other cases, and then they will, they will try to get to ours as quickly as they can. This will allow our officers to utilize the resources of the Marshal Service and their investigative techniques and all of the other members of the task force to execute those fugitive warrants, whether that person still remains in the city or they fled the city to another part of the country. So it's, we're looking at it as a great opportunity for us in terms of case closure and our ability to expand our, our resources by assigning people to this, this unit on a, on a part-time basis. It will get back that benefit wholly to the city. So it is a big benefit to us. The other thing, too, that, that is kind of the side piece to the whole thing is career enhancement internally for our staff. One thing that we focus on is officer retention. And so being able to provide career-enhancing opportunities like this is big for us. It's, it's something that in a larger agency would be easier to get into. Smaller agency is much more difficult. So we really view this as an opportunity, both internally and externally, career enhancement, allowing our officers to have different career goals, and externally, being able to really help in apprehension of violent criminals.
Yeah, I was going to ask about that, Chief. So this would be like a special detail. And I know that for, for members of the police department, these special details are very, very meaningful. But the, the net sum of this MOU, would it be reducing the, the resources that we have just in terms of the personnel that's available to take on tasks directly related to Green Belt?
So the way it will function is that these officers will be assigned to what we call our special assignment team, and that is a non-uniform investigative section of our, our criminal investigations unit. And they investigate street-level criminal events. So, so those officers would be temporarily assigned to the team. The way it would work, they'd be deputized as US Marshals. They would go through all of the marshal training. An extensive amount of training in the beginning, the investigative techniques, the databases that they use, and then the tactical piece that they teach them. Once they complete the training, they would return back to us, and they would then only detail to the Marshal Service when we have cases that are centric to us. So they wouldn't be assigned full-time to the Marshal's Task Force. You know, it depends on the caseload, but they'd primarily be here and then going to, to serve on the task force when there's Green Belt cases.
Thank you. Other questions from council? Yeah, please.
I was actually going to ask the similar question, but then a follow-up to that is, then for the assignments or the roles that they would play in their normal day-to-day job, do those responsibilities get diverted to other members of the police force? And how does, how do you work to make sure?
So that's the, so the special assignment team is, is an offshoot of our criminal investigations unit. And they typically take cases, if we have ongoing issues, we have an ongoing robbery problem, an ongoing burglary problem, they're detailed to those particular, those particular cases. The other thing that they'll do is look for fugitives. If we have known suspects in criminal events, they, they would serve in that capacity to look for them. So this assignment for that particular team just enhances their ability to do what they already do. So nobody else will have to pick up their workload while they're serving in the Marshal's capacity.
Thank you. Yes, Amy, please.
Thanks, I have a couple of questions. I see a lot that you've used this particular service in many incidents, and then it always comes back to Shrum Hills. How many times, if you can disclose, have you had to work alongside this organization?
So any, any of our major cases, Deputy Chief's telling me, pretty much any homicide that we have, when we obtain a warrant, we give it to the Fugitive Task Force to serve. All the armed robberies and things like that, that we have violent criminal suspects, we give those to the Fugitive Task Force to serve as well.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. And then I also wondered, has PSEC been consulted on this or been shown this MOU at all? And then do they pay for the marshal train? Do the marshals pay for the marshal training, or will that fall to the city?
So the way that the pay works is the officers, when they're on their regular 40-hour schedule, they're paid by the city. Any overtime they incur is paid by the Marshal Service.
All right, and the training?
The training, while, while they're on the 40 hours, their salary is paid for by us.
Oh, gotcha.
But the training, if there's costs associated with the training itself, that's paid for by the Marshal Service.
All right, and one more question, and that is on, from page three to four, there's a section about body-worn cameras. And I would just like to request that you please formally request to participate in the TFO BWC program and then comply with all of the US MS policies. There's apparently a very specific thing you have to follow in order to ensure that people who are working in the city of Green Belt are wearing the body-worn cameras, and I would like to make sure that that's happening.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to ask Mr. Samron his, his opinion. As the city manager, under our form of government, the city manager is the chief public safety officer for the city of Green Belt. So do you have a view on this proposal?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you for, for the question. It is before you because I endorse the policy. So the chief and I have discussed it numerous times. We, we, while there's a split of the, that the officer will be making while on US Marshal duties, the, that split or that time that's devoted to that work, it's still work under the city. They're still working on behalf of the city and executing the work of the city. And furthermore, we're, with this staff person being assigned to the US Marshals, we would then have access to all the marshal resources that we currently don't have. So we're getting the training, we're being able to do this additional work while also having access to the US Marshals. Think, I think now just for the team, the collaboration with the US Marshals, my first engagement encounter with the Marshals was for the Shrum Hills shooting. They were on site right away, so, and we've stayed in touch with them.
Well, thank you very much. Would a council member like to make a motion to approve, authorize the city manager to endorse a MOU with the US Marshals to provide?
I would like to move that we have the city manager endorse this contract.
Authorizing, authorizing the city manager to enter into an MOU. Is that, is that correct? Did I say that correct?
Yes, you're authorizing me to execute the MOU with the US Marshals.
It's moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. McKinney is second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Yeah, that motion carries. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Seth's gonna bring us to item number fifteen. Which, which is, uh... Raise crosswalks. Yeah, item number fifteen is, uh...
Skip over, skip number fourteen.
Okay, so item number fifteen is the Seven Hillside Road site distance issue and parking removal. In response to a resident concern about site distance at the driveway abuting seven A Hillside Road, staff reviewed current conditions and found reduced visibility on either, either side of the subject driveway. Although this finding would suggest considering removing the parking space to the north of the driveway, at this time, the city does not currently have a policy or process in place to equitably address site distance concerns at private driveways. Additionally, staff found insufficient visibility on all sides of the marked crosswalk just south of the driveway and insufficient space on the roadway for safe, compliant access to the bus stop at the corner of Hillside Road and Woodland Way. Staff recommends council approve the removal of four on-street parking spaces to provide sufficient daylighting of at least twenty feet for the marked crosswalk connecting the inner pathway just south of the subject driveway and to make the existing bus stop near the corner of Woodland Way and Hillside Road accessible. Jamie Fear, our, a member of our planning, senior member of our planning department, how are you this evening?
I am great, how are you?
That's fantastic. Is there some additional background that, that you have on this? It was on the agenda last week, and we, two weeks ago at the last meeting, and we needed a little bit more information and just more feedback, so could you, I don't know if you have a diagram or anything like that?
Sure, if, if we're able to open, um, excuse me, the staff memo, there is a, a visual.
That up on the screen?
On the very last page, on the third page. Not look as good as I thought it would on the screen. But, um, so a, as, as was mentioned in the agenda comments, planning was notified by a resident that they were having trouble getting out of their driveway, so they were having a site distance issue. Now, typically, if it's an intersection of two roads or a, a more public or multi-use driveway, say to an apartment building or complex or condo complex, we could do a site distance analysis, an engineering site distance analysis. But there isn't really guidance that we are aware of for private driveways. But we did go out on-site to take a look. And when we got there, we noticed that, yes, in fact, the site distance is limited if you're pulling out of that driveway and that removing the parking space to the north of the driveway, which is not marked on here with an X, but was two weeks ago. So just north of the driveway, you can see a, a parking space that is marked, and north is up in this diagram. That removing that parking space would help with the site distance issue for, for coming out of the driveway, for traffic that's traveling south, both for the traffic to be able to see the car coming out and for the driver of the car to be able to see who's coming. Typically, the site distance is really more about, excuse me, oncoming traffic being able to stop before they make contact with someone who's entering from the side. But while we were out there, we also noticed, and this is an issue across the city, which I address a little further in the memo, that the marked crosswalk that's there, that's between the driveway and the intersection, so it's not actually at the intersection and would be considered a mid-block intersection. And just north of the current transit stop that's at the corner of Woodland Way and Hillside. Um, and there is another bus stop at the corner of Northway and Hillside as well. And similar circumstances with other driveways in other courts. But that, the, um, four parking spaces on each side of the crosswalk were impeding visibility there. And that standard practice is to what we call daylight a crosswalk, both at mid-block and at an intersection, typically at an intersection, it's just at the, on the side of the intersection. But in order to do that, it's typically a minimum of about twenty feet, which is the, the size of one parking space. And so the resident did not actually ask us to remove these four parking spaces. The resident asked to be able to have better site distance getting out of their driveway. We do concur that that, removing that space to the north would, would help. And also acknowledge that we don't have a, a blanket policy for addressing private driveway site distance issues at this time. But the city does have a policy in co, in the city code about addressing site distances at marked crosswalks at intersections. Not specifically in the code about addressing marked crosswalks mid-block, but similarly, we would suggest that this is a best practice across the country to remove these four spaces in order to improve the site distance. And then we propose, and also because we have a bus stop there, that actually typically we want about a hundred and ten feet, which we can't give because of the driveway, although the driveway would be a part of that a hundred and ten feet, but that parking space shouldn't be there anyway, the one that's on the west and south of the crosswalk by the transit stop. And then similarly, that staff proposes that we, um, add to our work plan that we go out and do a systematic inventory of bus stops and marked crosswalks across the city. I do want to wait for the better bus decision from the WAMADA board just to see if any of our transit stops move or any of the routes change, so that we can analyze. I know we have a lot of bus stops that are really just posts in the ground, and there's parking in front of them, and that makes them inaccessible. And we have a fair number of marked crosswalks as well in the city that are daylighted and a fair number that aren't. And I think that it should be uniform across the city for safety reasons.
Thank you. I've got a few questions first. So the property owner, private property owner, it's, it's GHI, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And were you, uh, did you consult with them directly or as, as an affected party? Did you, I, I know the residents live there and, and someone complained, but were, did you communicate with the GHI?
Private property. The street parking is public. That's public property. But we have consulted with GHI, and they were going to share with their residents that this was happening. Now, we have a number of ARPA-funded projects that will do similar things. We were planning on capturing all of those together and having a conversation with the GHI general manager to talk through all of them. This one is separate from that. So there are other instances where this will happen with some of those ARPA-funded pedestrian and bicycle improvements. But yes, we sent the letter, and in fact, it popped up in GHI's newsletter today.
Okay, very good. So also, so is, when we, in anticipating this happening, is it possible to, to create another space or someplace along the roadway, or is that in the thinking?
I don't believe there, I mean, the rest of the roadway is marked, and unfortunately, there are other spaces that probably may need to be removed in the future for similar reasons. But that is something that we want to be systematic about and approaching and establish an actual policy for.
Yeah, and finally, I was over on the hillside last night eating spaghetti, and I walked across the street, so, you know, there was, there's a number of bus stops there. There's one, the county bus, I guess it's the fifteen or the eleven.
The eleven, I believe, yeah.
Right. So does that still stop there? Because there's bus stops, but there are parking spaces right in front of the, uh...
Yeah, you'll see the same thing along Ridge and other roads, particularly within Center City and throughout GHI, where, where the bus stops obviously came much later than the housing and were kind of just dropped in. And so we do have a number of projects of you've, as you've heard previously, that are ARPA-funded, where we will be improving the safety and accessibility at some of those bus stops. And some of them just don't have the space for us right now to put in a, a pedestrian or, or transit rider pad because they're literally just on the other side of the fence of a person's yard. Again, I think that's why we want to take a good look. We do have a previous inventory. Some of the routes have changed. That was a two thousand and thirteen study that was done across the city. But yes, there are a number of bus stops, they are still being used, but we do want to find out ultimately what the fate is of this route and other routes.
That would be really helpful.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, Mr. Roberts?
Thank you, I appreciate it. I would be willing to compromise and remove the one space at the, at the driveway, but I'm not gonna vote for the rest of it because it will create an extreme hardship for the people that live in those courts because they have no other place to park there. This is one place in GHI where those people only have the street parking. They don't have a court that they can park in. And along with that, I think, and you alluded to it, this is a common occurrence in Center City. I can take you to dozens of places where the inner walkway comes out and there's parking spots right on both sides. Some have crosswalks, some don't have crosswalks. But I think the problem here is that we put, the crosswalk that is there is in the wrong place because very, very few people use that. When they, when people come from the inner walkway closer to Ridge, you know, that goes down between Ridge and Hillside there, they generally come out in Sixth Court. There, there is no crosswalk. But also there, there's plenty of, there's more parking down near the church. So if you put a crosswalk down there, not only would a lot of people use it, but it wouldn't, you know, take away the parking for, that people need, you know? Otherwise, the people that live in that court, they're gonna have to park quite a distance away from their home. And some of them are, you know, senior citizens and people that maybe can't walk that far. So I think we have to realize that the Center City is different than other places. It wasn't based, you know, it wasn't built to today's standards. And if we want to go, and if we think that we're gonna go back and make it meet today's standards, we're gonna inconvenience a lot of our, our residents. And I don't think that's really appropriate because, you know, that's the way it is. You move in, I mean, you can't go back and change the whole city, you know, to meet today, today's standards. So because it is gonna create a hardship for the people that, that live there, I think removing, I noticed before you were talking about removing five spots, and now you're down to four. Wasn't that, wasn't it five the last time I saw?
It was, as I said, we've removed, we have taken away the spot that actually would help the resident. These spots are more generally about safety at our, our marked crosswalks and is it a national best standard?
But I think what we should do is we should un, you know, we should unmark that crosswalk and move it down to, towards Sixth Court where the other sidewalk comes out, where the majority of people actually use.
So we actually have, this is an opportunity for me to plug our meeting tomorrow evening.
Yeah. So, but anyway, yeah, I, I can't afford, I can't, I can, just can't vote to remove those parking spots because it's not something that we can do all around the city. Otherwise, people are not gonna have a place to park. And, and we haven't had, you know, a lot of accidents or we haven't had any fatalities, you know? It's, and over the years, it hasn't created a dangerous situation, you know, having the, having the inner walkways come out on, on our roadways. It's just, it hasn't. So there's, so we're trying to fix something. You know, we're gonna inconvenience everyone there, you know, for the, the one member who is having a problem getting out of their driveway.
This doesn't have, this actually doesn't have anything to do with the site distance. This is actually something we noticed. I do want to be clear, that it's something that staff noticed that is an issue, and if I may...
Have you done, have you done a study of how many people are using that area, or?
Ms. Niesel?
Yes, thank you. I, one thing that is unique about these two blocks of homes is that each one, unless they've had it re-done, does have a driveway and a garage. So this is actually a very, very well-serviced part of GHI as far as parking goes, that's one. To point to, I was looking, because I just was totally blanking on this intersection, I apologize before. I was looking at Google Maps, and I'm seeing that in two thousand and twenty-two, there was no marked crosswalk there. And I know that there have been the curb cuts for quite some time, but I guess I was wondering why the decision to put the crosswalk there when there was such terrible sight? Because I came up very fast on someone who was trying to cross today at this very intersection and felt like an a-hole. So I, I guess, is there an option to move the crosswalk? What was the decision to put it there instead of somewhere else?
So the decision was made at the time that Hillside was repaved last year. And I think that some new connections were made at that time to the inner walkway system. This actually connects folks, well, for one, to the bus stop, and for two, over to the playground that is to the east. Beyond that, I, I can't say for sure. There were a couple of other ones, but what I, what I wanted to point out was that we, we do have kind of concurrently and separate from this, uh, the Center City Traffic Calming Study. And independently, our consultant actually suggested that a crosswalk would go here to connect, to improve pedestrian accessibility in this part. And to the point about further south, they're proposing two more crosswalks, one of which is on our ARPA-funded list and will be installed, which is between two and four Hillside. The other proposed one is between four and six. That one is not going to be installed right now, but...
So we would have four non-intersection crosswalks on Hillside between Crescent and Laurel Hill?
I would have to double-check, but yes, because we don't have enough places for people to cross, and we want to guide them to marked crossings more so than unmarked. We have, as you mentioned, a number of, um, connections to the inner pathway that aren't marked. Previously, this was one of them. But in marking them and in being able to put up signage that calls attention to them and then increase the visibility around them, we are hoping that it makes it so that we have safer crossings. And, and often, they're in order to be able to access bus stops on either side of the road as well, where there isn't another crossing nearby. You're welcome.
Ms. Portem?
Yeah, and, and I have to say that I, I disagree with Mr. Roberts that we should not be proactive about making intersections safer and, and in, if there, there hasn't been an incident but it's identified as an area that's a potential problem. I don't think we should wait for somebody to get hurt to make a change. And so I, I think, I think you answered one of my questions, which was gonna be asked if this was, if this had come up in the, in the, in the traffic calming study, and it sounds like it has. But I think, I guess my other question is, is, you know, the question about, about parking, and it sounds like Ms. Niesel says that there's actually, there, there may actually be more parking in this area. Do we have a way to sort of force some of these as we're thinking about other situations? I mean, do we have the data for how many people live in a certain radius and how many parking spots? Just so that we can see what the impact is, is this, you know, removing four spots out of how, you know, twenty or four spots out of fifty or whatever in this, in this stretch? Do we have that, that data by any chance?
I am not aware of that. I don't know if that's something GHI has, and I don't know if they know how many cars there are per household. I mean, that is also, I think, possibly part of the issue with parking sometimes is that there's, there are multiple cars per household, and many of them are given one spot in which to park. But I don't, I don't know if we have that data.
Yeah, and I don't think it would be very hard to get at how many, how many cars are actually owned per household. I think you could figure out how many households and then do an estimate. But yeah, clearly, you're not gonna necessarily know if one household has two cars and the other has zero or, you know, one has five, for all we know. But more thinking of like a, how many households and how many parking spots. But I, I realize that would be fairly detailed data to get. Thank you.
Councilmember McKinney?
It's, do you, is there anything gained by not doing the four spots and like doing two spots? Or is it really like basically all or nothing?
So you, I think the very minimum that you could do would be two spots, and that would be on the approach. So it would be, if I, do you want me to step away and point to which ones they are? So on the approach, if you're traveling northbound, that would be this spot. On the approach, if you're traveling southbound, that would be this spot. So I then suggest you still be reflecting on the ten on... or even the opposite of the approaches as you pass the crosswalk for some visibility. I think our concern is that on a two-lane road that's fairly narrow, it almost feels like the approach is in both directions. This is not a multiple-lane road where if somebody is crossing the street, you have the opportunity to see them two lanes prior to them getting to your lane. This is if they step out into traffic, they have a very small lane to cross before they're in your lane. And so being able to see sort of them on the approach, if they're crossing from the opposite side, is why we would propose all four spaces. But to your, to answer that, it could potentially just be two with some space on the other side. I still, we would still have to here though, remove the third space because of the bus stop. That one, I think, actually did not exist before either and I think was accidentally painted back in and should be removed.
Thank you, thank you. Hey, there is a comment online from Kathy and it says, "Were the residents of Hillside impacted? The residents that were impacted on Hillside, were they advised about the proposed removal of parking spaces?" Because of the location, I would also say some of the residents on Woodland might have an opinion as well because those displaced cars might end up around the corner.
So we, yes, we sent a memo to GHI's general manager and they said that they would be in touch with residents.
Yeah, this is somewhat of a difficult decision as, you know, with your professional background and knowledge and the planning staff, you know, you've put a great deal of time into thinking this through and looking and this is your recommendation. So council, on the other hand, is, some of us are very familiar with, with the area and the intersection. And, you know, the whole thing kind of goes back, you know, because Greenbelt, its design is sort of like a square peg and a round hole. When they were planning and laying out Greenbelt, you know, they really were not making a lot of judgments based on the number of parking spots that should be available per unit, just the way the inner walkways are constructed in the courtyards. So it's, it's, you know, this idea of maybe eliminating two or three instead of four. Mr. Roberts?
I, I'm wondering, do we know that GHI actually contacted the residents?
You would have to ask GHI, I don't, they, they told me that they would.
I don't think I have to, I should have to because actually I think that, you know, if it's city right-of-way that we're dealing with, I think it's really our responsibility to contact the people, not, not GHI. Or not any, you know, whether it's someone or another entity or what, not another entity. If it's city right-of-way, city parking spots, I think it's incumbent on us to, to do that and make sure that the people know because I don't, I don't know that GHI contacted them. I, I can't make that assumption really.
Right. Let's see, Mr. Snyder, you have a comment?
Bob Snyder, 12 Hillside Road. I live up the street there, a couple of blocks or so. And I agree with what Mr. Roberts said. I think that, I'm not too crazy about that walkway there. There should be one down further at Sixth Court because that inner walkway goes all the way down to the longer one that goes all the way up through towards Plateau and eventually off down towards the, the center here. Whereas this one, if you walk down there, it just runs into a chain-linked fence, it dead ends. I think originally, probably the original plan had the, that inner walkway going further down behind the homes on, on Woodland Way. But, you know, as has happened sometimes over the years, people develop or lengthen their, their backyard and they're just chain-linked fence, so it doesn't even go anywhere. So like, like your point is, it shouldn't be there. But I'm also in favor of just maybe eliminating two parking spaces, but not four of them. I live up the road there. I have one vehicle, but some of my neighbors have two or three or four vehicles. And some of them do park around the corner there on Northway. But not all, not always. And I think, I just hate to lose more parking spaces. You know, that's my point too. So, you know, maybe, maybe the two worst spots like you talked about. But I, I would disagree, I would oppose losing four parking spaces there. And I, I would be in favor of another crosswalk down further on Sixth Court. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you so much. So I'd like to make a motion that we remove three of the spaces, two and the other one that impedes the bus access. I mean, we really have a couple of choices. We could just, you can vote against the whole idea. We could do it incrementally with the two spaces or actually three spaces. Or we could just defer this until later, until after for more research. So in order to expedite things, I'll just go ahead and make that motion that we remove three of the spaces. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any additional discussion? Mr. Roberts?
I'm, I'm actually surprised that none of the residents are here and it may be because they weren't contacted, I don't know. But I, I really wish that, you know, we really knew the answer to that issue because I, you know, when people are dependent on, you know, parking near their house, and they are and want to create a situation where, you know, a senior has to walk, you know, a long distance to park their car or the other issue is it's a public safety issue because we have a lot of things going on and people want to be close to their home when they park. They don't want to have to walk a distance, you know, at nighttime especially. So I'm, that, that's factors. Safety, the public safety beyond trying to cross the street is a, is a factor for me in this. So, you know, I, I would compromise down to the two, but I wish we would, we would do a little more research and actually have outreach ourselves to the, the members that live there.
Okay, Councilmember McKinney?
Just a quick question. Is there a, any time sensitivity around making this decision? So I'm, I'm wondering, because you have reached out to GHI, GHI is attempting to reach out to residents, is there any issue with waiting to hear back from GHI? As well as, I know that, you know, our meeting minutes and the report of what we're talking about today usually goes in the news review, so there may be some comments back. But I don't know if there's, you know, a decision that you need to make fairly quickly or if that could wait.
I don't know that it needs to be done quickly. I again do know that we have similar instances that have been approved that are, that are ARPA-funded projects that we will start construction on. And again, we will notify GHI of all those. Perhaps the one at the bus stop because currently that bus stop is being used presumably and, and that, that space should not be there.
Appreciate that. Let's go ahead and take a vote. All in favor?
What are we voting for now? Removing, no?
Removing three spaces, one for the bus and two, two of the approaching spaces. Is that, is that correct, what you were suggesting?
Yes.
And the, the two approaching spaces, and I'm, I'm seeing someone move the cursor there. Ms. Anderson, you're on point. So, and when you say approaching, that's actually going from north to south, right? Northway.
Approaching, so in the driveway.
No, no, Hillside, east.
Well, both directions.
Well, yeah, coming from Woodland towards, towards Crescent.
Well, that one is approaching north to south. Then the bottom one, lower left is, and that was approaching south to north. And then lower left is the bus stop one.
Right, okay. So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay, it sounded like four to three. Does everybody agree to that?
Yeah, I guess I, I'd like, I'd try to, like to make another motion to see if we could, and if I could make maybe an amendment to that.
Who said yes? I'm not, I'm not sure.
I heard, I heard four. Do you want to do a roll call? Yeah, do a roll call, please.
McKinney?
No.
Poppy? Pope?
No.
Niesel?
Yes.
Roberts?
No.
Weaver?
Yes.
Jordan, Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Motion case says four to three.
Okay, and, and the reality of this action that we've taken is that the removal of the spaces and the, the construction and whatnot that would be involved, I guess it's not construction, it's paint, that would take place at the same time as these ARPA projects were moving on. So it wouldn't actually happen until December.
It could happen, well, probably, probably not, yeah.
Probably not till, okay. Hey, thanks for your analysis and all of your work on this. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I'm just going to stay here.
Well, let's see, that brings us to item number 18, which is item numbers, approval.
Fifteen.
Fifteen, oh, I'm sorry. Okay, item number 15 is authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with VMP Construction Company Incorporated for installation of raised crosswalks. It's memorandum back on the ninth from Jamie Fear. The contract utilizes a portion of $320,000 of American Rescue Plan Act funds allocated for pedestrian and bicycle master plan implementation improvements. Staff recommends that the city council authorize the city manager to execute a contract with VMP not to exceed $20,000. This will allow the city to utilize ARPA funds to complete asphalt and concrete work in support of pedestrian and bicycle master plan implementation improvements as the budget allows and addresses contingencies during construction. And there are two memos that are associated with this item. Ms. Fear, would you like to elaborate or explain? Once again, as we're just saying, this work, we've got so much of this American Rescue Plan work coming up and we're also approaching winter coming up pretty soon. So the, the timeline that this would actually occur, what, what are your thoughts on the timeline?
I was speaking with Mr. Kim and not entirely sure. I know VMP is currently in the city right now doing work. So it kind of depends on their schedule. It's possible it could happen before December. But if, if we find out that that would not happen, then we would go under contract in order to encumber the, the funds so that it could probably happen in the spring. There are actually two asphalt projects that we'd like to get with VMP. I will be bringing the second one to you on November 18th. So it'll actually be an addendum to this quote.
And the raised crosswalks, the locations?
The locations are, and unfortunately, I don't have a map for this one. I don't know if it's easy to bring up maps, but Onridge between Southway and Westway. There are currently three marked crossings. And previously, the city has studied speeds along there. This is also going to show up in the Center City Traffic Calming Study. And so there will be a board showing some of this tomorrow night as well. And I apologize for not having that diagram here.
It's okay. And what's the second one?
So there are three marked crossings. Currently there, we are proposing raised crosswalks at two of them. And this is based on previous studies. There was a speed bump study, that was the speed bumps.
It was a bump, it was not a hump, it was not a raised.
I have heard.
But these are, these are raised crosswalks.
These are raised crosswalks. So you're more familiar with these at the elementary schools.
Right.
So they're, they are not the speed bumps, which are, can be a little jarring. And, and you wouldn't walk across those. So these are technically speed tables that have marked crosswalks across them. So if I may step away again.
Yeah. I can move the pointer.
Could you take it without the, what is it, just the map view?
You don't want the satellite view?
Yeah, there you go.
I don't know, I think the satellite view may.
It's just a little bit, so. Better image.
Do you have a better image?
It's better without the non-satellite. Let's see who can come up with the best image. Oh, that is better. There's one here, which, yeah, here. Where's that from?
Yes.
Look at that.
Bing Maps or something like that.
Oh, that was taken, see, it's a different time of year, isn't it? There aren't, the, the leaves aren't on the trees, so you can see the crosswalks. So Jamie, I think the problem is that people online can't hear you and can't see, so. I think so, yeah. Hostway now has the cursor.
Great. So there is one to the east of 11 Court. Other way, that, yep, right there. That one will be raised. And then the one you just were pointing at to the west, that one will be raised. The one that's closest to Westway in front of Mish Contoura will not be raised, but will remain a crosswalk, will, will remain a marked crosswalk. It's pretty close to the intersection. There are some issues with the driveway there and, and making the raised crosswalk at this time. So there might be some drainage issues if we did that, that might require more engineering. So we're proposing those two to become raised crosswalks.
Very good, very good, thank you. Questions or additional information that you have from the memo that you'd like to share with the public and with us?
I don't think so. I, we had gotten the sense, other than that we had gotten the sense that this is, folks on that block have been waiting for these for a long time.
Yes, they have.
And, and so I think this is a pretty welcome addition as far as the parking is concerned.
Here we go.
Is that your question?
Now, my question was, is there going to be some sideline daylight images there?
These are already daylighted. This is a good example of crosswalks that already have a parking space removed on either side. However, the, the crosswalk that is to the west of 11 currently has a bus stop on either side of the crosswalk and actually does not have enough clearance technically for the bus stop, does not have that 110 feet. That bus stop was proposed to be removed under the current better bus proposal. So we will not do anything until we find out if and when that bus stop will remain. And then it can become a part of our systematic inventory to decide what we need to do. So currently, these crosswalks are daylighted in the way that we would prefer, which is about 20 feet on each side or one parking space on each side. They're already like that. I actually had gotten a request from an APB member to create more space on the approach because they feel like they have trouble seeing people. But also our hope is that having the raised crosswalk will increase the visibility for, both for drivers and for the people walking.
I, I think so. The raised crosswalks, will they have the, is it the continental striping within them?
Yep.
And that's a white paint?
Yep, thermoplastic.
White, yellow, or just thermoplastic?
The white thermoplastic will be applied on top and it'll have a little chevron that shows that you're approaching a speed table or a speed hump. And I think I am ordering speed hump signs, but if not, we'll probably put those up as well.
Very good, very good. Any council questions? There was a hand raised online, but.
Yeah, they, they lowered their hand, so maybe their question was already addressed.
Does anyone have a question on this topic who's in the room here right now?
I think it's great, it's time. Thank you.
Want to make a motion?
Sure. So I moved to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with VMP Construction Company for the installation of raised crosswalks, a contract not to exceed $20,000.
Second.
Okay, let's see, any discussion from council? Stephanie has her hand up again.
Put her hand back up.
Yeah, it's going up and down. Stephanie, are you there?
I'm here.
Good evening.
Good evening. On all these crosswalk bumps that you're talking about putting in, have the neighbors been notified for all this?
I, I would say there, there's a pretty high degree of public awareness in this section. There have been several speed studies over the years. There was actually a speed bump that was installed. I guess that was about two and a half, three years ago.
I think it was about two years, yeah, about two or so years.
So I think the public awareness is pretty high. Now, this is a. So, I think the public awareness is pretty high. Now, this is a raised crosswalk. There's one up by the uh.
Yeah.
Definitely not a bump, it's a table.
Those temporary speed bumps that were there on Ridge, I can't imagine you got good feedback from that, 'cause that was terrible.
It's terrible.
Was terrible, that's true.
I believe that's what.
Was not, I mean, uh, oh, you're saying it's just me, or?
It's not the same thing that's gonna be installed, though.
Okay, but. How do we know how that compares to what was installed, and how many people are aware of this? The people that I've been talking to, because I've heard about this, no one has any idea that this is coming.
Well, well, thank you, thank you. Uh, so up by the elementary school on Ridge, Greenbelt Elementary School, there's a raised parking table. It's it's a a common, these are being installed in a lot of crosswalks around schools, so it's much more subtle, much flatter than a bump, but it's enough to get you to slow down a little bit. So I I think that uh, you know, based on people that I've spoken with in that area, they they've been, many people have been wanting to have something there to slow folks down just a little bit, not a speed bump, but I think this speed table at the crosswalks will be just the thing to speed, to slow people down just a little bit, but at the same time, not to to damage people's cars or to be quite as jarring as other remedies. Wouldn't you agree, Ms. Fear?
Yes, yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Yeah, please go ahead.
Pointer, is this uh, are we planning these uh humps in other areas, or is just these two, or?
For the ARPA-funded ped bike related projects, these are the only two. In the um Center City Traffic Calming Study, there are others that are proposed as longer term uh improvements. So I think, you know, we can also see how folks.
You know, how many?
Take to these, I don't know off the top of my head exactly how many. Um, one of those that I alluded to on Hillside is proposed in the longer term to be a speed table, but we are currently just going to be installing it as a as a flat but marked crosswalk. Um, but there are some others that are proposed.
Well, I'll say this, uh, in this round of humps or bumps or whatever you wanna call it, uh compared to the one that happened about thirty years ago on Northway, uh, this is very calm, because that was uh, that was a big uh, big challenge getting getting the speed, I guess you'd call them speed humps on Northway, or they bumps, I don't know, but, yeah, that that was uh very uh controversial in the day, just getting those in, so.
Those are more like humps, and they're they're not, I mean, it's not a bump. You come to a speed bump, serious one, you have to completely, you know, come down about five miles per hour, but this, these speed tables, uh, they slow you down to about twenty, twenty-five miles per hour, which is the speed limit.
Well, 'cause they're the entire width of the crosswalk, so if you picture that, they're the entire width of the crosswalk, so we're not talking a little narrower thing. It's, what, six feet wide at least, probably?
I believe, I don't have the, or I might have the specs with me, but they're, and then they're flat on top, so that you can walk across the top, so they're not.
And of course, it's a crosswalk, so it makes it easier for pedestrians to to make it across the street.
I think we need some some enforcement as well, because when I drive around town, I don't, I don't, I do the speed limit, and I, whether I'm on, you know, Crescent or Ridge or wherever it is, I get people all the time that are passing me on the left, passing me on the shoulder. A lot of people are in a, are in a hurry nowadays, apparently, and I don't think the speed humps or and that kinda stuff is really, you know, deter that. I think the only way to deter that is through enforcement, you know, targeted enforcement. Unfortunately, we'd probably need more officers out there on the street doing it. I know they have more serious things to do, but, you know, when people are passing you, I don't know how fast they're going when they pass me, they're, some of them are going pretty fast, and uh it's kinda concerning to me.
The raised crosswalks are twelve point five feet wide.
Thank you.
By forty feet, which is the length of the four lanes.
My diagram is too tiny to read.
Yeah. Uh, Ms. Pope, uh, you you are there at Spring Hill Lake Elementary School. What do you think the impact of the speed raised crosswalks has been there?
I think it made a big difference. I really liked them. I wish we would have a second one, that that other crosswalk further down, so that's kind of on my wish list, but it does, it does bring awareness. Um, I think we didn't have stripes on it or something, and someone said, well, why should I stop there? 'Cause it doesn't have stripes. I'm like, okay, it's like a hump. I mean, it's a, it's a crosswalk, right? So I think we did that, so, while the question came up, but I think it made a big difference. And like I said, I really would like to have a second one, but just putting it out there.
Okay, thank you so much. Uh, would someone like to make a motion? You did, did we? Oh, we did, we did, okay. Uh, let's go ahead and take a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that motion does carry. Thank you, thank you. And that's something that would happen December.
If it doesn't happen before December, I imagine it will happen in the spring, once the weather turns back.
Well, thank you so much. Hey, next up is item number twenty-six, and that is uh approval of the uh Buddy Attic Park Outdoor Pavilions Contract. Uh, and it's it's based on the Buddy Attic Pavilion Concept Plans, and to some extent, it's uh based on the Buddy Attic Park Master Plan. City Council allocated American Rescue Plan Act funds to replace the nineteen ninety-two Buddy Attic Park Master Plan. Uh, through the new master plan, though the new master plan has not been adopted, and I guess it was adopted.
No.
No, it wasn't, oh, I'm so sorry, I'm sorry. It is evident through community engagement that an outdoor pavilion at Buddy Attic Park is desired. Staff recommends that two pavilions be installed uh consistent with the draft Buddy Attic Park Master Plan. So pavilion number one uh is twenty by twenty feet. Mr. Kevin Carpenter Driscoll, are you here to actually talk on this?
What's happening, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, okay. So pavilion one, twenty by twenty feet, located next to the playground uh as per the Buddy Attic Park Master Plan recommendation. There's concrete pad with a one-foot dip line, drip line, six tables bolted to the concrete pad, metal roof with max height of thirteen feet, serving groups not to exceed twenty-five people, and once again, that's ADA compliant. And pavilion two, a twenty by thirty feet uh pavilion located in the original group gathering area uh per the Buddy Attic Park Master Plan. Concrete pad, one-foot drip line, uh ten tables bolted to concrete pad, uh metal roof with max height thirteen feet, serving groups not to exceed fifty people. That would also be ADA compliant. Both pavilions will be available to rent greenbelt residents only. It's estimated that rental revenue could increase by about fifteen to twenty thousand dollars per year. Should be noted that a total of seventy-five people at any one time matches the maximum attendance uh of the park, you know, the original group gathering area. Staff has uh, is making this recommendation. Kevin Carpenter Driscoll, city manager, San Maron, uh, it's great to have you with us tonight. Do we have a diagram of of the two pavilion designs, just so that people can visualize them? If we could put that up. One thing that comes to mind, yeah, that's sideways, so that's the one that would be on the uh west side of Buddy Attic Park, near the spillway, or near the dam, actually, nearest the dam on the hill.
It would be by the playground.
By the playground, right.
Higher.
Yes.
Okay, would it be right uh adjoining the basketball court, or would it be back a little bit further?
It'd be back a little bit more towards the swing set area.
I have a diagram of that.
And the second one?
The second one.
And the second one will be up, uh, location in the circle where the the group picnic area is currently.
Okay, close to uh, close to Crescent.
Yeah, right down here.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, one question I had, it says that both are gonna have, the picnic tables are gonna be bolted down, is that, uh, what's the rationale behind that? Because sometimes when groups come, like over at Trom Hills Park, the uh, the benches are not bolted down, so groups can kinda move them around as needed.
Yeah, I believe one of the concerns is that we get, we have those picnic tables that are out there now, uh, and they walk around a lot, uh, wanted to make sure that these kinda stay where they are supposed to be, so that, you know, to reduce the amount of maintenance that's required for them, and to make sure that we are using these properly.
What's a drip line?
Drip line would be the overhang from the um, the the rooftop, so where the waterfall's gonna be coming down. So all those, the the pavilion is twenty foot by twenty foot, the concrete pad is gonna be twenty-two by twenty-two um to to account for that drip line, so you're not getting erosion underneath.
Okay, and uh the roofs are square, one of them's pitched, right? The other one's square?
One's a rectangle, one is um, well, square, uh, the the larger one, well, it's not shown on the uh, the graphics, but we did request to have a gable to make it a little bit more welcoming.
Right, I think I I remember seeing the diagram for that. One of the questions that came up as we were talking about the master plan had to do with uh the impact, particularly in the picnic area closest to Crescent. So uh, the response was something to the effect that these could be constructed without really having an impact on the current tree canopy, or i.e., trees would not have to come down in order to to install these. Is this correct?
Yeah, we do not anticipate that any of the existing trees are gonna be impacted. I mean, any, you know, as we get further down into final, you know, preparations with the contractors, things may come up, but we'll bring that to council if anything does arise.
And what would the timing of the installation be? If if we move to approve this tonight, when would you expect the pavilion construction to happen? Would these be ready for uh next spring?
So there would be at least a four to five month lead time on these pavilions, um, so I wouldn't, I would say at the earliest, uh, end of spring, early summer.
Okay, would this have the impact of the utilization of that picnic area closest to Crescent, if it would be constructed during the summer season?
That's a good question.
Well, we hope it would be prior to the next summer season. There will be some impact on the earlier part of the year, such as the spring, since some of this project is weather dependent. On the positive side, it, I I know that some council members would like to see the map Buddy Attic Master Plan get executed in some form right away, uh, so these would be big items that we could check off the the master plan. There's one, at minimum one of these would would replace something that's existing, which is that with the pavilion, the picnic shelter area. The other one will be in addition.
Right. So, you know, I've asked a few questions, and one of my concerns that I've brought up a number of times is uh just with the exit, the implementation of contracts. We we contract with these different construction firms in particular, and in some cases, it just always seems to take longer than what we planned for. So, uh, you know, I've asked about adding something to our contract uh language to to ensure that uh there's adequate due diligence to 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 complete uh contracts on time and some disincentive somehow. Have you given some additional thought? With all this contracting we're doing around the ARPA funding, you know, it's it's uh difficult when you raise residents' expectations about something happening, and then, you know, it takes a really long time.
Tennis courts.
Like the tennis courts or other projects. Fortunately, the playgrounds sort of came together pretty rapidly. They took a little bit longer, so, but thankfully, you know, we can get this done, so.
We we have some good relationship management with our contractors now. I think the the during the time that I've been here, we've been able to uh work closely with the with the vendors and the contractors to get our projects uh done expeditiously. I know the most recent one, the playground at Trom Hills, uh, sorry, not Trom Hills, uh, Spring Hill Lake Recreation Center, we wanted a, we wanted that park to be done uh much faster than it's currently being done. There were some delays by the contractor, and they were willing to accommodate us in the middle of the summer. The problem with that is we we actually turned them away, because we didn't want to put a halt in our summer camps. So when they were ready, the timing just didn't work for us, so we pushed them off until later in the year. So that 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 project could have been done um faster. We didn't want to affect summer camps.
Summer camps.
Right. The the other projects, you know, the, with uh VMP and other contractors, we had the issue with the Eleanor Roosevelt High School that we we pressured them to get that project done ahead of, ahead of the schedule, so that we could get that road resurfaces without impacting the start of the school year. Uh, so they're accommodating to to us. They've been accommodating to our our sidewalk project um just recently here at the Roosevelt Center, so I I think we've hit a good stride with the current work um that we've done. The, to directly answer your point about punitive damages um or 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 fines for delays in projects, we have thought about it, we've discussed it, and the, we wanna exercise prudence in the relationship management, just work in the relationship and 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 making sure that we're clear about expectations and looking for collaborative approach, because the punitive damages on these contracts, they're, the contractors have no shortage of work right now. So, we could lose co- uh ability to secure contractors if we are, come across as too punitive with with the damages and and contracting terms. So, and and when everyone looking to spend their ARPA money, we're hitting up against that that challenge.
I'd like to think of it not as being punitive, but just, you know, if if the contractor says they're gonna do something in a certain timeframe, you know, things happen, but at some point, you know, I I think that there should have some uh, something to motivate uh our contractors to to finish, you know, ninety days or one hundred and twenty days of a project. Uh, council member, please.
Thank you. Um, pardon me. I noticed that the cost of the actual picnic tables isn't included in this quote, and I just wondered if you could give me, it says that it's gonna be uh provided and then mounted. Uh, it'll be provided by others and then mounted by the company. Can you give me a ballpark estimate about how much sixteen tables would be?
I would have to double check with the contractor on that one, but I don't know off the top of my head.
Ms. Portem.
Does this plan take into account any, I I I assume there are already trash cans up by the existing picnic area, but will we add additional uh trash and recycling bins um near the new pavilion site? Is that included in this, or is that something that Public Works would just take care of separate from this?
Yeah, that would be a different operational process for not Public Works.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, would someone like to make a motion that we uh?
Um, I I move that, um, where's the actual, I move that council authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Sparks at Play LLC to build two pavilions at Buddy Attic Park for a total cost of two hundred and eighteen thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars and thirty-four cents.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Pope has seconded. Is there any additional discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Uh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, we're gonna move on here to number eighteen. I think.
Um, I think, did we have seventeen? I think we need to go back.
Number eighteen.
Approval of community center chillers.
Chillers, come next.
Approval of community center chillers, boiler replacement project in fiscal year twenty twenty-three adopted budget. Uh, that provided funding for the replacement of the major mechanical equipment uh located at the community center, two chillers and two broilers, boilers, excuse me. The existing centrifugal a hundred-ton chillers are approximately twenty-nine years old, with an expected useful lifespan of twenty-five years. Twenty-nine years old, the lifespan is expected to be twenty-five years. During that time, the EPA made major changes to the refrigerant requirements, and as a direct result, chillers were no longer available. Uh, that that is equipment using the R four-ten-A refrigerant uh that replaced the R twenty-two, which is banned by the EPA in twenty twenty. So uh, that equipment has a higher global warming potential, and we're replacing it. The proposal is to replace it with A two-L, which is non-toxic, flammable, low burning velocity refrigerants, uh, for example, the R forty-five four B slash R thirty-two. So, existing gas, the nine fifty MBH broilers are approximately twenty-nine years old, also with an expected lifespan also of twenty-five years. During the twenty eighteen reserve study, the engineers noted signs of erosion, corrosion, deterioration of the outer housing, as well as possible leaks and corrosion in the coils, and since that time, facilities maintenance has mentioned, uh, confirmed that uh this deteriorates, deterioration and degradation of the units is continuing. Given the critical nature of these systems, timely replacement is crucial, seasonal construction constraints. Seasonal construction constraints further emphasize the need to replace the chillers in winter, targeting completion before summer cooling season and vice versa for the boilers. Additionally, supply chain issues for these two long lead items require prompt attention, prompt action to ensure continuity of services for building occupants. Due to the aforementioned code changes, the amount of engineering along with the ability to procure long lead items in time for the next cooling season is not possible. The existing cooling system will remain operational for an additional cooling season as uh, the required engineering and procurement of equipment. It's uh, if we can do this uh, in time, it's still going to mean that uh, the current cooling season, season is going to continue with the current uh, operating equipment. Mr. Brian Kim.
Yes, sir.
Acting Director of Public Works, welcome. It's so nice to have you with us tonight. Uh, can you talk a little bit about the RFP proposals? First, can you talk about this timing issue and the procurement and, and the fact that we need to take action now in order to obtain the equipment that we're talking about?
So I think the biggest takeaway from this is I, I think we all established that the chillers needed to be replaced. I think I spoke more about the chillers versus the boilers, but uh, when they were approved in FY twenty-three, they were, they were both the same project. Um, having said that, um, basically the verbiage in the beginning is just more environmentally friendly refrigerant. That's what it changed to, which led to the delay. Um, the key piece of this project is we plan on keeping the cooling season up and running for an additional season.
Um, summer of twenty twenty-five?
Yes, sir. Uh, that would allow us the opportunity for the engineering and the procurement of the long lead items. Um, in addition to, I mean, basically we, there's no way for us to get the equipment to, to start now in, in the chiller project now. So that's probably the, kind of the biggest kind of change. Uh, but we have, that'll save costs as far as not having to provide temporary cooling system. Um, in addition to that, um, we talked to the engineers, facility maintenance manager. He has more confidence in keeping the existing chiller running in additional season uh, versus what the temporary cooling system would provide. Historically, temporary cooling, it's, it's always a bit inadequate. It's finicky. Um, and it would add a lot more cost to the entire project. It would be another little mini project inside of another project.
Okay. Hey, well, let me go ahead and make this motion. So uh, I, I'd like to move that uh, council authorizes city manager to execute contracts with both Shapiro and Duncan and CPJ, uh, CP Johnson at the total cost of the contracts amounting to one million uh, hundred and sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred forty-five dollars. Uh, at, at this time, the funding sources for these contracts will be the American Rescue Plan. Is there a second? Because we can talk about this some more. Okay, thank you, thank you. So if I'm understanding this correctly, we're talking about uh, replacing the, ordering the parts now with ARPA money, the machinery, and then in the fall of twenty twenty-five, we would begin uh, replacing the, the chillers and the boilers would take place in uh, the spring of twenty twenty-six.
Exactly. Exactly.
Okay. Uh, one thing, we're talking about the community center and that's, that's certainly at, at the the focus, the center of so many of our activities. Let me pause just a second. Mr. Summeron, you have?
Yes, I just want to add some uh, reference to the, the funding. Council had approved a million dollars from ARPA money on, on this. So the, the way we're going to fund the project, the one million dollars as approved by council is going towards the contractual obligations for the equipment and labor. There's a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. That's a contingency. We are not tying up ARPA money for that contingency because it's unknown. We could spend it, we could not spend it. So we didn't want to obligate funds that we may not spend entirely and we don't want to write a check back to the US Treasury.
No, we don't. We definitely don't want to.
So the way we're proposing to fund the difference is using the capital reserve fund to fu- to, to fund the hundred and sixty-eight thousand. So we'll use up the one million as approved by council through the ARPA allocation and the one sixty-eight will come in at a later, later budget request. Uh, probably the twenty twenty-six budget because the way the, the installation is going to work, we have to order these parts now to get the chillers installed uh, during the winter season and then the boilers during the summer season.
Right. I was going to ask about the, the impact though, you know, the uh, having visited uh, the, the room where the HVAC room, I suppose that you could call that, where the chillers and the boilers are located. It's, it's not easy to access. So what, what impact would these installations have on activities in the community center?
So there'll be quite a bit of uh, I mean, dur- during demolition as far as the rigging is concerned, there'll be a, a bit of disturbance where GFE currently is. Um, that's where uh, the new chillers will be kind of hoisted in through. Um, so there, there, there will be a little bit, but we don't foresee, you know, shutdown of the building or anything like that. We, we, we're working towards keeping the building as a whole operational. There, there may be sections of the areas that, that will have to close down for safety purposes, but for all intensive purposes, there should be minimal impact.
So it's specifically, you know, I'm thinking of the Greenbelt News Review Office and also uh, the gymnasium and the stage and whatnot.
It, uh, maybe a little, little loud as far as the noise, but as far as impact, I, I think the greatest impact will be where GFE, a- anyone that's using GFE at the time.
Yeah, Mr. Summeron.
What the, I forgot to mention on the one hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars, while the capital reserve fund can be used for this, we're still, we're pursuing other grant opportunities for the hundred and sixty-eight thousand. We have eye, we have our eyes on two opportunities. One is the PEPCO repay program for the energy efficiency and this would qualify uh, for the, for the chillers. And we're looking at a thermal envelope grant for the building as a whole on the, on the heating.
And, and the timing works out really good for that because with the grant, that's actually quite a that would take care of a substantial portion of that. And with that grant, you're not supposed to do any work on a project before you actually apply for the grant. So the, so the timing actually works out really good for us to be able to leverage ultimate uh, funding sources.
So, and that's just the contingency funding. The American Rescue Plan funding is going to go towards the uh, the materials and the labor.
The, the million dollars are going to be used on the chillers, the boilers and the engineering uh, review, which is the, to the CPJ engineer record.
Councilmember McKinney.
Is the contingency at the fifteen percent your typical contingency that you have in these types of projects or was that more or less given this type of project?
For, for this project, it, it's uh, it, it, it's normal. Um, for example, the structural remediation at the outdoor pool deck, we, we lever, we utilized thirty percent because the unknowns were just, you don't know until you start lifting up layers. Um, but for typical HVAC projects, MEP projects, fifteen percent is i- is, is normal. For example, with Buddy Attic Lake Playground, that was negligible. I think we, we had zero, zero or five percent contingency. So depending on the project.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Um, just circling back to the uh, impact of construction on the community center, you know, accessing that area, uh, would it have any impact on the uh, the uh, front face of the community center where the bar reliefs are?
No.
So the equipment would sort of come in through that doorway and down there?
No, it would, it would come out through GFE, the, and it would be hoisted and rigged all the way through that hallway, through that door. So we would actually have to remove some walls to get this equipment in. It wouldn't go down the stairwell.
That's what I was thinking, yeah.
So it would literally be where GFE is, um, where the food, food distribution that conference there, the double doors.
Uh huh.
And then we would blow out a section of the door as well as the wall.
So we'd have to relocate. We'd have to relocate the kitchen area, the kitchen area completely?
No, no, it's just, no, no, we, yeah, we would be away from that, but once
Oh, okay.
there's a wall that separates GFE from the mechanical CPU, like the central.
GFE, what's GFE?
Ground floor east.
Ground floor east, okay. Got it. And Mr. Portem.
Yeah, um, is there, is there any, anything, you know, recoverable or uh, from the old equipment that could be, you know, parts or metal scrap or anything that it could be recycled or used for? Is there any use in any of those parts? Even if it's just metal scrap?
Uh, we, yeah, we recycle and we, we scrap all of our, you know, the copper or the steel, yeah. Uh, but typically if a contractor is contracted to demo something, it's theirs.
Okay.
So we don't come in and say, demo that out, but I want to keep this. It's just not the etiquette for construction.
But so, so we wouldn't necessarily get any monetary benefit from any recycling, but it would get recycled?
It, that would be up to the contractor. So for example, if there was some copper piping, for example, that they tore out, we, we wouldn't lay claim to that. If that was in their contract to tear out a certain section of copper piping, just as an example, it, it would be theirs to recycle, but they wouldn't throw that out. They'd take it to the scrap.
Well, yeah, the copper is valuable. I was going to say, can we put some of that in the armory? Sorry.
So, but as far as the steel and things like that, we don't, there, I don't, I don't foresee a lot of salvageable
Okay.
where we could reuse.
Okay.
And just in terms of some of the environmental impacts, uh, so the, the refrigerant that's currently in there has been banned by the EPA and even though these are uh, twenty-nine years old, is there asbestos or lead and whatnot?
No, not that we, not that we're aware of. A, a lot of that asbestos would be on the insulation and no, that, that, that had all, already deteriorated. By the time I got there, it was just fiberglass.
Okay, okay. Well, uh, is there additional discussion? Anybody online?
We have, we have a, we have a comment in here. Mr. Hartman, I believe, has his hand up.
Mr. Hartman, please go ahead.
Michael Hartman to Courtyard Way. Knowing our Public Works, I know that, that uh, this has probably been uh, investigated, but I'm just wondering if you can give a, a little bit of talk about the fact of possibly uh, not using the boilers, gas boilers and using some other methodology for heating that wouldn't include the use of gas. And um, you probably investigated it anyway, because that's what you guys do. Yeah, can you explain the, the process was in deciding not to, to just replace it with a, with a electronic or whatever other way other than using a gas? Continue. Thank you.
Mr. Summeron or Mr. Kim?
So, so I mean, you could use geothermal, but you'd have to core drill down
Space.
to those levels. We don't, it was a replacement in kind. I think the driver for us was how quickly can we get the heating system up and running? Uh, as what, as well as cost. So. No, we, no, it was, we, we're trying to leverage the current infrastructure that's already in place and that's, that's how we did it. We weren't asking for a total, complete redesign on the boiler system. It was a replacement of the boilers. So as an example, for the chillers, there's a whole engineering and redesign because of the refrigerant. So they have to come up with construction grade drawings, sort of speak. They have to engineer the complete project. With the boilers, it was just a replacement in kind. I don't, I don't know if that answers your question.
What, what's the, the expected lifespan of, of these replaced chillers and boilers?
Twenty-five years.
Now with the new boilers, while, while they're gas powered, they're, the new ones are going to have greater efficiencies. So there will be a reduction in our carbon footprint just by replacing them with newer, more effi-
That, that's also um, how we're going to be getting the grants, is that they, they have to be energy efficient. I believe it was by forty percent, had to reduce our.
Forty percent, you said?
I, I, I believe so, I.
Ideally, it'd be great to do a, a um, a hi- a hybrid model, uh, geothermal. But there's no land space to do a ge- geothermal there. So it'd have to be a combination of electricity, heat pump. That, the concern that, that I have is we're racing against time with the ARPA allocation uh, and hearing of the heating envelope of the building.
You'd real, you'd really need to get engineered drawings for that, for a contractor to price that out. In other words, that in and of itself is a whole nother project um, that would cost the city hundreds of thousands of dollars, easy. So.
And, and for perspective, the boilers are being replaced at two hundred thou- at a hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars.
You, you would, you would pay that in, just in the engineering before you even put that out on the street to say, hey, is this possible? This is what we want. And, and going that route would probably cost two or three times that.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, is there another question related to the subject that we're speaking about now? If not, let's, yes, I know, thank you. So uh, a motion has been made and it was seconded. Do we need to do a uh, a roll call vote on this by any chance because of the amount? The No, let's do a roll call vote.
Kenny?
Yes.
Ms. Poppy?
Yes.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
Ms. Niesel?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts? Ms. Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Hey, thank you. Thank you for your work on this, Mr. Kim. Thank you, Mr. Summeron.
I appreciate your patience. We've been talking about this. I know there's been a headache and a heartache for a lot of folks. Uh, but we're getting it done. Maybe I should just speak for myself, heartache and headache.
Well, next up is item number nineteen, which is actually item number twenty-one. Approval of the ARPA information technology, equipment and licensing. Uh, it's based on a uh, uh, memorandum from Mr. Cannell, uh, October twenty-first, twenty twenty-four. Uh, I, the IT department here in City of Greenbelt would like to purchase equipment and licensing at a cost of uh, one hundred thousand, twenty-one dollars and sixty-one cents using American Rescue Plan Act funding. Uh, the breakdown below, I'm not going to go through the breakdown, but if we could put it up on the screen, well, there it is. Uh, the IT will be using these ARPA funds for equipment and licensing that was not included in the general fund. The equipment that will be used to maintain our computer lifecycle and rotate out old and end of life equipment. It's also going to maintain, help us to maintain an inventory of necessary equipment to uh, maintain the city's technological needs throughout the budget year. So uh, we're going to license and maintain the uh, uh, Mercai uh, infrastructure. So Brian, uh, welcome. It's good to have you here tonight. So uh, it mentions acquirem- equipment and licensing. So uh, the licensing, is that for the Mercai?
It's Maraki. It's
Maraki, that's close.
and access points.
Okay. So is that like an annual licensing fee and would that be just for this year coming up or is it a number of years?
Three years worth of licensing. You get a discount for grouping it together.
Okay. Uh, so there's a number of laptops. There's some desktops. There's some tablets. There's docs. There's switches. Uh, the ubiquity switches and the Mercai uh, access points. So the Mercai system, it's both hardware and software?
That's correct.
Council, would anyone like to make a motion that we can discuss this?
Yes, I would move that council authorizes the city manager to execute contracts for IT equipment and licensing not to exceed one thousand, twenty-one dollars and sixty-one cents to be paid from ARPA funds sourced from multiple vendors, including CDWG and GHA as outlined in the attachment memorandum.
Second, we're just going to change that to one hundred thousand?
That's what she said.
Twen- she said one thousand.
I heard one hundred.
Oh, it said one hundred thousand dollars, twenty-one cents.
I heard one thousand, so.
I heard a hundred thousand.
So. Well, what if the city could?
Hundred thousand, twenty-one dollars and sixty-one cents.
Got it, and that's okay with by you, Ms. Poppy.
I heard one thousand, I'm sorry. I just wanted to make sure we do the right thing.
Okay. Hey, uh, so with the laptops and the desktops and tablets, what's the expected lifespan on those? It's about three years, four years?
Uh, about four years for laptops and desktops are five to six.
Same thing with monitors?
Monitors last a lot longer, but we had, we've been adding a lot of them, so.
And the switches?
Uh, they're probably eight years, give or take.
Okay, okay. So, and you mentioned the vendors. Is there any discussion or any concerns about this proposition?
Somebody second? I didn't hear.
Yeah.
Oh, you did. Good, okay.
Well, not hearing any discussion, so uh, let's go ahead and vote on that motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Mr. Roberts stepped out of the room for a moment.
Thank you.
Well, thank you so much. Thanks for hanging in with us. So if I'm not mistaken, I think that's going to take us to uh, meetings or council activities. Yes, sir. Please do not raise your hand and yell. Yes, sir, please do not raise your hand and yell across the room. So, sir, let's move to council activities, unless it's council's will.
No, if, if it's related to the earlier question, we already told Mr. Orleans that, that, that that wasn't going to be addressed right now.
Okay, please proceed with the council activities.
Was it, is it real, with the one we just, related to the, uh, the item we were just discussing?
Okay, well, thank you so much.
Current item, then.
So, please, let's proceed.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm getting it up. And I think there may be some, um, if anybody added to the, I think I got you, the, the farm tour I just added. I don't know if there was anything else. Yeah, I may not have gotten all of them added yet, but I will, I, I will add them in. Well, I, I.
You know, it's been in a
Oh, yeah, I'm not sure I got those.
There's just so many things going on, it's.
I will add whichever ones Danielle just added in the last few minutes to this, so this might not be completely complete. I also think there were. No, that's, and I think there were some people at the pumpkin carving and the pumpkin walk that I did, that I probably didn't see, so I know I was there, but I don't, I suspect there were others.
Carving.
Okay. I don't know if there's, yes, it was, it has been a, I think everybody chose to have their events in October, including some things that were in different, um, different months last year, like the, uh, the Utopia Film Festival and the Public Safety Awards, which were, were public, which were in November and December last year, and they were all in Octobers. So it made for a very busy October. Um, where, I think there must have been others at the pumpkin walk as well. Who.
One thing to call out, uh, Kristen, you've mentioned the film festival opening dinner and awards, but I know several of us actually went and saw a lot of the films
Yeah.
throughout the weekend, so maybe, um, noting that.
Yeah, I don't know if we want to, I mean, I could add that, yeah, there was some really, and I, and I definitely encourage the, the film, um, about, um, Miss Iona King and her son, because I got, that was one that I made a point of going to see, and you have another opportunity to see it, and it was amazing. So I definitely recommend people go see that. So that was what, I'll say the nineteenth to twentieth, um, Utopia Film Festival. Did, was, um, pretty much everybody go to at least one, I don't.
To a couple.
I think we.
It's great.
Several. It was great. I went to some on Saturday and some on Sunday.
So I'll just add, I'll just make a second entry for that, because there were, and I, I wish I had been able to see more.
And of course, we, we have the ribbon cuttings. The, the new CCI facility over there on Aura Glen is just, it's fantastic. It's a huge facility. Teaching institution, uh, federally qualified public healthcare, primary healthcare center. Uh, it's at forty-eight thousand square feet, it's just amazing facility. Cut the ribbon, uh, officially over at the Credit Union, the Prince George's County Community Federal Credit Union. Film Festival, Utopia Film Festival, the pumpkin walk, it's just amazing seeing, uh, so many, uh, folks from all across the city, over in Trom Hills and the center and Beltway Plaza. Uh, a lot of pumpkin guts. They, they all went over there to the, uh, compost area by Trinity Church.
Yes, some of them ended up on Cherrywood Road when they fell out of the back of my car. The rest are in the compost.
That's a, that's a lot of pumpkins. And that Cog Farm Policy Tour of, uh, community farms in District Columbia is very, very interesting, you know, just seeing, seeing what they do and being able to share a little bit about, uh, Greenbelt's, uh, legacy with community gardens. This was an important part of that.
And that is, that is an acronym, right? A farm?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, I'll have to look up what that one is, because I try not to put too, don't, try not to put outside acronyms in, in this listing. I think people probably know what GHI is, although I suppose I could spell that out, too.
Pug Walk was fantastic. People, uh, starting off over in the west and, you know, checking in throughout the city and ending up over at Trom Hills, just amazing. And of course, the, uh, NASA Goddard, uh, there, this new annual event where they are planting a cherry tree in honor of, uh, Mr. Robert Goddard, who, uh, as, as a youth, uh, planted a cherry tree and, what was it? He climbed up the cherry tree and he, he had this vision of the future or something?
I think it was, he had, he had, uh, uh, an epiphany about wanting to build rockets. I don't remember, the story was told so well there, and I don't remember all of it, but, um, but that was, it, 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 what led him to, to eventually create the, the, um, the liquid-filled rockets that are really significant for early space travel, because they're more controllable than the solid fuel rockets, um, that you just turn, you know, you light and they go, whereas liquid fuel, you can turn off and on.
It's a, it's a really, really, uh, nice, uh, gesture. I mean, so that's the most recent addition to our tree canopy over there. Uh, what else can I say? I think I covered it pretty much. Uh, it was just a busy week. Uh, the past two weeks, just incredibly busy.
And a really nice recognition of Beltway, of, uh, Beltway, uh, hardware, that was also, uh, this month.
Fuller, uh, Brooke Learman came to present a proclamation. That was in honor of, uh, Women's Small Bus- Women Ownership Small Business Month. I think I got that right.
National Women's Small Business Month is what I had put on my calendar, so hopefully that's correct. And it looks like Ms. Niesel stepped out of the room, but I appreciate that, um, she and, and, uh, and Ms. Pompey decorated a, a trunk for council at the Trunker Treat on the twenty-fifth, um, at, which is also the pumpkin carving there.
Yes, really appreciated that. I did stop by and I helped to eat some of the candy.
Thank you.
Somebody had to do that. So that's council activities. Uh, so is there anything, we have to actually go into an executive session, uh, tonight. And I think we've covered everything on here. So at this point, Mayor Protim? Would you like to make a motion?
Um, yeah. I move that council go into, should we wait for Ms. Niesel to get back or no? Maybe it doesn't, um. I move that council go into closed session in accordance with Section three dash three oh five B one, eight and ten of the General Provisions Article, the Annotated Code of the Public General Laws of Maryland. One, to discuss the appointment performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction, or any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals. Two, to consult with staff, consultants, or other individuals about pending or potential litigation. And three, to discuss public, uh, security if the public body determines that pub- determines that public discussion would constitute a risk to the public or to public security, including, um, one, uh, the deployment of fire and police services and staff, and two, the, the development and implementation of emergency plans. The purpose of this meeting is, one, to address personnel matters over which this public body has jurisdiction, and two, to consult with staff about pending or potential litigation, and three, to discuss the deployment of, uh, fire staff. And I didn't ask, Mr. Samron, will anyone else be, just you and council? Okay, so, um, in addition to council, uh, city manager Samron will be in the closed session. Note that council will not return to an o- uh, an open session following this closed session.
Well, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Councilmember McKinnon has, uh, seconded. Uh, roll call vote, please.
Ms. McKinnon?
Yes.
Ms. Pompey?
Yes.
Ms. Pope?
Yes.
Ms. Niesel? Mr. Roberts? Ms. Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay, the time